They're informal, and we, but we do have an agenda, and we will go through the agenda, and I'll move our conversation along as, as we address each and every item that we have before us this evening. So, I think I saw that Melanie was zooming in.
Yes, she is here electronically, although she's gonna, she's there, but will contribute only if necessary.
Okay, because I, I saw that she popped up and then she went away, so I do know that she's present. Okay, the first item on our agenda is to let everyone know that this is a hybrid meeting. We're in person, and we also have people that will be presenting online, and we also have staff members who are zooming in. So, if anyone would like to join us, just use Zoom to participate, and that is HTTPS colon slash slash zoom.us/join. Or you can view us on channel sixteen or eight fifty-nine. And the packet is on our website, so that's where you can find all of that. So, the first item on our agenda this evening is Tom Osiki's statue request, and this is a request that comes to us from a group that is wanting to have this statue memorial, to memorialize Tom Osiki. And JJ, you're going to be presenting and introducing Pete Hoenish?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of council, longtime community member Peter Hoenish had came forward to the city earlier this year, and then to our Parks and Natural Resources Commission to present the idea about recognizing Mr. Osiki for his contributions to Burnsville and the hockey program here over the years. Mr. Hoenish is joining us online via Zoom.
I'm here.
All right.
Okay, are you on? Let's see if the host can, so we could see Mr. Hoenish?
Hoenish.
Hoenish, Pete?
Nobody ever gets it right.
It's, yeah, and I've known you for such a long time.
You just have to turn on his video on his end.
You want to turn on your video, Pete?
Surely.
Yeah, so we can see. Yeah, now we see you. You know, people need to know who you are and what you're here to talk about, so the stage is yours.
Well, thank you very much. Good evening, everybody. As JJ said before, you know, Tom has been around Burnsville for a long time, and you know, the background here, I think you might all have it in the packet or online there, but Tom Osiki started the Burnsville Boys Hockey Program back in nineteen sixty-six and coached at Burnsville for twenty-four years. Incidentally, my dad was the assistant coach at the time. My dad started in sixty-seven with Tom, so I've actually known Tom my entire life, being that I was born in sixty-nine. During that time, his teams were section champions six times, state runners-up twice, and state champions twice. He was named Minnesota Hockey Coach of the Year in eighty-five and eighty-six, and was inducted into the Minnesota High School Hockey Coaches Hall of Fame in ninety-five. Tom took a break from coaching high school hockey from ninety to ninety-five while he worked as a National Hockey League scout for the old Minnesota North Stars, who are now the Dallas Stars. Returned to Burnsville High School from ninety-six to ninety-eight as the girls' hockey coach. He then started the St. Olaf Women's Program and coached there from two thousand to two thousand and four, where he was recognized as the Minnesota Intercollegiate Athletic Conference Coach, Armyak Coach of the Year in two thousand and two. He returned to BHS and coached the girls' team again from two thousand and four to two thousand and six. He's also a recipient of the Cliff Thompson Award, given to members of the hockey community who make outstanding contributions to the sport in Minnesota. Tom also coached football and baseball in the sixties, and later served as head coach of the Bedment Team, winning four state championships in that sport. I've said this before, hockey may be considered a dying sport in Burnsville, just with demographics changing, and, you know, hockey is, it's just not surviving as well, but a group of us think that Tom should be recognized for his accomplishments back, you know, I'd like to say back in the day, but when I was in high school. And, again, numerous contributions to the hockey program. Tom still lives in Burnsville today and has since nineteen sixty-six, when he started teaching at Burnsville. And that's what I've got, you know, it's obvious that hockey is, you know, changing around here. Here's a picture of Tom skating, and then I believe there's another photo of what, there's Nick, the artist, and he's already done a rendering of what the statue would look like. But, you know, I was out walking the pups the other day, and I saw that the, the rink behind the ice arena has been removed and is now a garden, so if that's not a telltale sign of what's kind of happening to hockey, or ice, I guess, in, in Burnsville, I don't know what is. But I think now would be a great time to put something up to recognize Tom. He's still alive. That's, that's always been kind of a pet peeve, that if, you know, you put something up after they, they've passed, you know, they don't get to see it, and so I'd really like to be able to have him see it. And one other point that I'd like to bring up is that, you know, the boys' hockey is what Tom has really been known for a lot over the years, but he also made great strides and achievements in girls' hockey. When girls' hockey started at the high school level, it was known as ringette, and they more or less played with a dog toy that was the shape of a, a ring, and the players had a straight stick, and it morphed into girls' hockey, which has become a varsity sport in both high school and now college, and is an Olympic sport. And so, you know, it's been a real, he was always a real big booster of women's, girls' hockey, women's hockey, and it's, it's really grown to the point where there's, you know, tons of scholarships for high school girls that want to go on to play, you know, college hockey, and without Tom's coaching, I think a lot of that, you know, in Burnsville might not have happened.
Okay, thank you. So, the thing is, Pete, you've, you've been before our Parks and Natural Resource Commission. When you talked to me and you talked to our staff, we told you about the policy with regard to public art. And, and you talked to the Burnsville Foundation, who does all of the public art, who, who has done a lot of the public art. And from what I understand, that they support the work that you do, but they don't want to do it because they're working on homage. And so, you do understand if you take this on, the cost of all of that is on you, and you will need to raise all of that. And this, and I think all of this, JJ, you can correct me if I'm misspeaking here, that this was all discussed also at the Parks and Natural Resource Commission?
Madam Mayor, the Parks Commission isn't as familiar as the, with the city policies as all of, all of you are, so the Parks Commission simply recognized all of the great works that Mr. Osiki has done over the years, and acknowledged that, yes, they would be in favor of supporting him in some type of recognition fashion, so.
So, the thing is, what we can do as the city is identify a, a spot, just like we've done with other public art here in the city. For instance, like homage is going to be between City Hall and the police station is the site that has already been identified, and, but, but you, you all are going to have to make sure that you do that. Our staff can help facilitate any of that, but you do know that you're going to have to raise the money, not only for the sculpture, but for the placement of the sculpture within a particular setting. So, our staff has gone through all of that with you. Yeah, okay. So, members of the council, you know, the only thing that we will have to agree on is a spot, and from what I understand is that Pete and the, the folks who are, would like to have it somewhere around, I see that you have the Ice Center in front of us here, and you want the statue to be somewhere in that vicinity?
Yeah, Madam Mayor. Sorry, Peter, go ahead.
Oh, thanks, JJ. Dean Molsa and I went out one day and looked at, you know, different areas, and we felt, and the artist, Nick came out as well, and we felt that that was, you know, just the way the, the loop there in front and the, the flow of traffic going into the arena, that would be a great place, not only, you know, for people to see, but also, I don't know if you want to call it protection, but, you know, it, it's out there, so hopefully it would never be vandalized or anything, because it is in such a, an exposed area.
Yeah. So, members of the council, the only thing is identifying a spot for it. Our staff will work with the group, Pete's group, that will raise the money, and then all of that. Your thoughts?
I think that's a perfect spot.
Okay.
I, I agree. I'm, I was looking at envisioning the statue right there, and it's a great, for the entrance as people come and pick up and drop off at the ice arena.
Yep.
Well, I, I have no problem with it. I, I didn't know the history, and the background was, was great to just give me a perspective on how important this person played, and, and he's kind of the Vince Lombardi of hockey here in Burnsville, if I could make that comparison.
And he still lives here, and he's down in...
You're talking about Bud Grant, right?
Yeah, and, and, and he lives down in southwest Burnsville, so, yeah, and, and I've known the family for a long time.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't have a problem with location. I think the financing is, you know...
They're going to raise the money, everything?
Right.
Yeah. Ben?
If that's the spot they like, I am on board. I like it.
Okay, so everyone's on board with the spot? Greg, I think you all will just have to, you know, I don't foresee a lot of staff time with all of this. The thing is, is that identifying the spot, but also working with them, because I know Garrett's been working with the Community Foundation on homage, you know, and we also worked with putting Ascend in Nicolet Commons Park, and Centifuge, the Ames Sculpture, all of those, so I think, you know, there's very little staff time, if I understand, because even the Vandeleen Sculpture over at Alamagna, that too, was all done by the Community Foundation. They raised the money and, and, and designed the park, just like the Ames Center, that whole park was, it was a huge undertaking, but they did it and they paid for it.
And we did Vandeleen while he was still alive, too, so he departed from the normal.
Yeah, so, okay, Pete, you can tell your folks, you start raising your money.
I've got a kid need to go sell here real quick, but, yeah, we're gonna start a GoFundMe page, and we're gonna get things rolling. I really appreciate it, and...
Yeah, and I, and I would say that, JJ, are you the point person on staff?
I believe I will be taking the, the lead for staff, yes.
Okay, you work with JJ.
Hey, I already have been. We've been in contact a lot, and I really think this is gonna be a great thing.
Okay, well, congratulations, and we look forward to being there when this, when the sculpture is unveiled.
Yeah, hopefully it'll be in February, when the arena does their fifty-year anniversary.
So, you want to do it this, in twenty twenty-two?
Correct, yeah, it just seems like the right time with the, the anniversary of the arena, you know, Tom was there when the arena was built, and it just, it seems right to, you know, unveil it then, and hopefully, you know, his, his son Mark, who's a coach at Wisconsin, will be able to be in town for it when it happens, but the timing just seems right.
Go raise that money.
I'm on my way.
Okay, Pete, thank you so much. Yeah, congratulations. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye-bye. Bye-bye. Okay, the next one is the drones in communities, and hi, how are you this evening? Welcome. Presenting on the drones this evening is Katrina Gilmore from MNDOT, so...
Can I run with this...
Welcome, yes, Michelle is right there, too.
So, while she's getting that going, I am Katie Gilmore with MNDOT. I work for the Office of Aeronautics, and my very first slide explains what the heck we're doing with airplanes here with, with MNDOT. We don't just do potholes and, and plowing, we do a lot of other things as well. Been with MNDOT about two years.
overlook the potholes, though.
We won't overlook the potholes.
We like that, you know?
We don't like the potholes, we like your looking at them.
I, I think this is the freeway of the future, that we have to really understand how we're going to navigate and keep everybody safe.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, whether it's drones or else, personal vehicles in the air.
Heading towards the Jetsons, right? I grew up in the nineties, yeah.
Yes.
Madam Mayor, I've interacted with Ms. Gilmore quite a bit in the last few months, but I've never met in person, so it's nice to meet you.
You're Dan. Oh, it's nice to meet you, too.
Thanks for inviting me onto your work group.
Wonderful, we're looking forward to it. Yeah, great, so we'll talk about that here, so I guess we'll just get started. So, I'm with Office of Aeronautics, and so as I explained in this slide, we are very similar to how the federal government works, where DOT owns both highways and aviation. It's the same thing at the state level, so our DOT at the state also owns aviation, highways, and other multimodal transportation, so we are part of MNDOT. So, what we're talking about today is small unmanned systems and large unmanned systems, so you've probably all been familiar with the influx of unmanned aircraft, small unmanned aircraft, you can buy them at Target, Amazon, they're flying in your parks and cities. It has fundamentally changed the way that we navigate in the airspace. Growing up, I was a, a longtime pilot, grew up flying in an airport. It was a lot to become a pilot, even five years ago. Now, our kids are flying drones in the same airspace as our military helicopters, so it has really changed the way we access that airspace, and with that comes a lot of rules and responsibilities, and lots of opportunities, so that's what we're going to talk about today. There are three different phases that we're going to go through with these technologies. The first one is a small unmanned aircraft that we have today, transitioning into electrifying our smaller regional aircraft. If you think about our central service cities, or some of our smaller outlying commercial airports, and then going into the unmanned passenger and unmanned large cargo vehicles, and we can kind of envision the Jetsons, it looks, it looks very similar to that. So, I'll go through each of the different technologies, we've, want to leave plenty of time for questions. If you have questions while we're talking, I'm happy to answer on the fly and make it interactive. So, the first one is our small unmanned aircraft. These are the ones you're seeing flying today. The picture on the left of the commercial operator is the DJI Mavic, that's one of the most popular drones out here. I know a number of cities, counties have those aircraft, we do as well. There's two different ways to fly a drone. It's either commercial, and that means anything other than hobby, so commercial includes your police and fire, includes MNDOT, it includes your realtors, your farmers, or it can be a strict hobbyist, and that is you're flying just for fun. You're flying in your backyard with friends, you're building and crashing these things, and there are different rules for each, but they're very similar. And the goal with the FAA here, FAA, Federal Aviation Administration, is a safety organization. They want to keep people in the air safe and people on the ground safe. So, for example, we cannot fly our drones above four hundred feet, because traditionally manned aircraft do not go below five hundred, so there's a hundred feet of oops in there for us to stay away from each other. There's a couple of other rules. As this technology has been rolled out, and they've gotten some data and some information, they've changed rules, so if, if you have, you know, police and fire that were familiar with rules at one time, those do change. So, MNDOT is a resource if you have questions. We also have a great FAA office here at Minneapolis that we can support your questions as well. So, there's three levels of regulation, of course. There's the federal with the FAA, there's also state regulations, so MNDOT is the administrator for the aviation regulations here in Minnesota. We do require all commercial aviation companies, and that includes drones, to have a business license, is a commercial operators license to operate commercial aircraft. We also require that, just like they register their cars, they have to register their aircraft, so we handle that through our office. We are also the only state that requires insurance for aircraft, for commercial aircraft, so that's handled through our office as well. And then there are also...
I can ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
So, if you have a realtor who uses drones to get the aerial shot of a, of a property, what costs are they facing?
They are required to register their aircraft. The statute is based on manned aircraft, and it has not yet been updated to reference unmanned aircraft. So, aircraft is a general term, it includes your Delta planes, and it includes your small unmanned aircraft system, so, and that's based on a tiered price range, so your realtor has to pay a hundred-dollar fee every year to register their aircraft with the state. They're required to show proof of insurance, and that's up to them, where they want to get their policy and what amount. The statute requires three hundred thousand dollars. That's way below what's typically offered these days, but they require to pay insurance, and then if they're offering those services outside of their own use, they have to then obtain that commercial operations license. If they're only using it for their benefit, for their own listings, then you don't need their commercial operations license.
So, how much is a commercial operations license?
That is thirty dollars a year.
So, that's thirty dollars a year. And then, the insurance policy, what type of insurance are they required to cover? Like, I assume it's not like for the craft to be damaged, because, whatever, but...
Right, it's aviation liability, and then they can choose to add on any other business insurance that they like to have, but the statute only requires three hundred thousand dollars of aviation liability. There's also requirements for seat liability, but there's no passengers, so that does not apply to these aircraft.
Okay, and as of yet, these drones are being treated as if I had a Cessna?
Correct, per the statute.
Okay.
So, Katrina, one of the things in a, a, a meeting that I was at, that there's a pilot license for if you're going to be a, so if you're going to have a drone and you're going to use it commercially, or, or a city, you have to have a license, a pilot's license, to operate the drone?
Correct, a drone pilot's license.
Yes.
Correct, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And so statutes are changed by the legislature, so until we see a change, we have to work with...
Yeah, I, I get it.
I owned a small business before joining MNDOT, and I experienced those complications.
Katrina, if I may, Katrina and her husband operated a commercial drone business for many, many years, and she basically walked away from that to become a state employee and head up this division with the state. So, from what I've gathered in the time that I've been sitting in on a few different state level, and even the World Economic Forums, there's so much at play, and there's so much learning being sort of jammed through the pipeline, that there's a ton of work to be done. Case in point, state statute governs a drone the same as a plane, so there's a lot of work to, more clearly defined, a policy and a governance for each one.
Absolutely, and that's one of the reasons we want to get out and start talking about this, because as we get into things like advanced-to-air, these larger aircraft with serious investment from industry, we want to be positioning ourselves that we're planning in advance for what our cities want and our municipalities want, so that we're not talking about this in a larger scale in ten years. So, there are local ordinances as well. This is tricky, because the FAA manages all airspace, so we can't, as municipalities, the state can manage things that touch the ground, so we can do takeoff and landing ordinances. Not everything on this list is, would stand up, that's not MNDOT's job to handle those, but we do list these. It's very difficult for pilots to know what's out there, because some of these are PDF, so if you are thinking about ordinances, we always suggest that everybody gets advice and talks about these first. There are good ordinances and tricky ones.
I'll ask you a question. Are those cities you have listed, can, can realtors use drones in those cities?
So, St. Bonnie, no. Their ordinance precludes anybody from flying within city limits, even police and fire. And this was complicated, so back when that was passed, police and fire weren't using drones for search and rescue, for fire support, so now what might have felt like a, a grand, you know, idea, it gets complicated as the technology progresses, so forward-looking policy is really important here.
Now, is that strictly commercial or hobby as well?
They include everything.
St. Bonnie doesn't want anything in the air.
See, one of the things, when you're, when you're, when we're looking at drones, and also making sure that there's not going to be any conflicts with, with airplanes, whether that's coming out of St., of Eden Prairie, or, and because for Burnsville, one of the methods that we use is the river valley, to go on taking off, they need to go by the river. So, depending on how low that airplane is going to be flying before it really ascends, whether it's going to have a conflict with a drone, and I think those are some of the issues that we need to be aware of.
Yeah, and it's fascinating to watch the technology develop, so now, even with my smallest drone, and I should have brought one, I didn't think of it, it will, so manned aircraft has to have this thing called ADS-B.
Yes.
It's a beacon, and so any other aircraft, if that aircraft is carrying it, can see that signal. My drone can now see that signal, and the FAA just passed a rule in this past January that drones are going to be required to emit that signal as well. It's a different technology solution, but same basic premise. That technology takes a couple of years to roll out, but some, we expect some aircraft will be offering it within the next year or so. So, everybody recognizes that concern, and, you know, low-level mosquito control, or medevac, or even an airplane sightseeing, yep, everybody wants them to be safe.
Yeah.
Absolutely. So, next couple of slides are about what's happening here in our state, and then a recent survey that MNDOT conducted. So, it's been a, the fastest-growing sector of aviation. Here in Minnesota alone, we're adding about a thousand pilots a year for drones. We've now surpassed the number of small unmanned aircraft, or small manned aircraft, so like the, the folks taken out of, off of Flying Cloud, there are now more drone pilots than there are those types of pilots, so it is a very fast-growing area. Also, we add about two thousand drones a year in our state, and it's been pretty consistent, so US-wide, it's, and these are numbers, they're almost here, old now, I need to update them. US-wide, there's about seven times more drones than aircraft, and here in our state it's about two times, so it is growing, and it is a growing sector of aviation that we need to pay attention to. So, this is a survey that we did last November, to find out what our communities think about drones, kind of get the temperature as we start talking more and more about these unmanned aircraft. We asked, do you own a drone or know somebody who does? Three-quarters of Minnesotans said yes, and we got a really good spread between city, rural, outstate, different demographics, so this is a pretty good representation of what we have. We said, do you use your drone for work or for play? And interestingly, almost two-thirds were recreation, and this is a fascinating string to pull, probably in a different meeting, is that for the schools, I get a lot of calls from schools about integrating these into their learning, because it's physics, it's computer science, it's engineering, it's fabrication, and these teachers are able to use these small, relatively low-cost aircraft that can usually fly indoors with the right size, and teach these kids unbeknownst to them, all these STEM topics, so schools have really picked up a lot on this, and those are recreational flyers, in addition to the folks that fly for fun in the parks. So, it's a pretty wide use.
So, what is the difference in classification of how you classify, or how it's classified under law, of what is the difference between a drone and an RC plane?
They are the same. So, the FAA only designates whether it's hobby or other than hobby, and other than hobby means commercial. So, if I build a Starphone plane, and I glue a camera to it, and I'm taking pictures for real estate, that would, in, before twenty fifteen, would have been an RC plane, because I built it at home, it's, you know, something I put together, we would have thought of that as RC, but because I have strapped a camera to it and I'm taking pictures, I'm in the commercial side, even though I built it myself. So, really, the FAA cares about the use, rather than the aircraft itself.
So, the technology in, in how you control the plane, that's not a deciding factor on this?
Correct.
It's the use.
Correct, the intent.
So, how does that affect all the RC plane shows and all that kind of stuff? Because they have some huge RC aircraft.
Big ones that can carry dogs.
It's been tricky. So, part of the recreational rules is if you are above half a pound to fifty-five pounds, you're regulated differently under the commercial side, but recreational users can go above that fifty-five pounds. It, the, there is a requirement to operate it within the guidelines of a community-based organization, and that is still being defined by the FAA as they figure out these rules, as we kind of make it up as we go along, and those community-based organizations require their members to fly in certain fields for those large aircraft, or have certain training for those types of aircraft. So, recreational has a little bit more leeway because of these traditional flyers, and so they're able to still continue what they did within the safety recommendations of a community-based organization. Thank you. So, we asked how people feel about drones. Interestingly, less than ten percent had strong negative feelings, so angry or scared. A lot of people were curious, interested, excited, which was positive for what we, from what we expected. We also asked how drone, how people thought that drones could benefit their communities, and we've had a lot of great news stories about finding kids in cornfields and doing fire support, so of course, search and rescue is one of the top ones, inspecting power lines, that's a big job for a lot of folks right now, using drones to look at power lines, agriculture uses, we've got a drone company here based in Minnesota that does a lot of focus on ag, and a lot of ag companies here as well, so...
So a lot of great uses for drones um, out there in our communities. So drones are the beginning of what we're looking at here for the technology arc. And so what we're looking at next is this move to the electric regional aircraft and the advanced air mobility. This picture here is from NASA, one of the NASA work groups that I work with, and that's kinda the thought of where we're headed to. So this slide is in a lot of presentations that I see and I now like sharing it as well. So on the left is a picture of New York City in nineteen hundred, and that little red circle is um, a car, the rest are horse and buggies. Thirteen years later, same intersection, they're all driving cars. So I don't know that we're quite gonna see that roll out of technology, but we're at about that inflection point where these are gonna become something that we talk about a lot more. And so we want people to be aware of them and start um, working towards planning how their communities want to see these come in. So this is a slide from NASA that kinda explains the different uses of these aircraft. Um, everything from micro haul, think of your air taxis, uh, on demand service to air metro, your bus lines in the air. Um, air taxis I mentioned, the airport shuttles, um, going from the outlying airports, flying cloud into MSP. Um, MSP to Rochester, emergency services like our helicopters, dropping off a doctor on site rather than having them coming on a helicopter. Uh, and then of course cargo as well. So this is a transition that we're looking at, drone delivery, and these dates um, are the estimated aircraft certification. Of when these aircraft can fly, not necessarily when we'll see them here in Minnesota. Um, so we expect drone delivery, these are your package delivery aircraft, um, to be, start flying this year. And that actually happened, there was a pancreas delivered in May, um, I can't remember the hospital name, um, but they did move pancreas via drone. Uh, we know that Amazon, UPS, FedEx, a number of other companies are working towards drone delivery here. Um, these are last mile or first mile, it's not just getting your, your packages to your house. It's also moving things within warehouse districts or within large uh, industrial complexes as well. Moving to the electric regional, so these are smaller passenger craft, ten to fifty passengers, um, going to smaller airports. Moving those to electric and then hybrid electric, one of the exciting things there is that they're reporting a seventy percent reduction in operation costs. Which is significant, so that increases the business case where we're trying to get to airports other than major hubs. And looking at um, return and investment for those, those companies. And then the last, and we expect to see some of those aircraft certified within the next couple of years, they're pretty close. And then the last one is what they call urban air mobility, and the new term is advanced air mobility because it's not just urban. And those aircraft are coming to certification within the next couple of years. Uh, military's already certified a couple of them, and these are manned, moving towards highly uh, automated and then autonomous. Um, they are generally electric aircraft, um, they're sustain, you know, sustainable energy. They are um, operate much like a helicopter, though a number of them take off vertically. And then their rotors move, like the Osprey in the military, if you've seen that aircraft, and then fly forward. These are shorter range, they're battery, so batteries are heavy and they don't have a whole lot of power yet. So we're looking at about two hundred miles or so, we'll see what the technology develops into. Um, but this is near term, so a lot of conversations I have, this is not your children's drones, these are your drones to plan for. Um, when they come to Minnesota, there's kind of, there's a lot of factors there, but they will be available. And we're talking about infrastructure and planning and legislation changes, these things take time, so we wanna make sure that we're talking about these now. Um, so I mentioned the technology will be ready, it's here today, it's getting the policy in line, it's getting all the other infrastructure pieces in line. Um, the top one is um, the same aircraft that deliver the pancreas, the bottom one is a Joby aircraft that's already flying for the military. Um, United bought uh, two hundred of the, of a similar type of aircraft to do regional operations. Um, so these, this is, this is real, this stuff is coming. But it's the backend, it's gonna be the part where we have a lot of planning to do. So all the infrastructure, everything from our weather systems to radar systems, um, routing, how we want these things flying over our cities. Um, lots of jobs, we need maintainers, we need security at all these landing spots, we need, um, people who are gonna work at dispatch. We need attendants for these aircraft, so big economic inputs, um, but a lot of, a lot of things to work towards as well. Um, so a lot of this is locally driven, so aviation traditionally, we're flying over states. You know, you fly from New York to California, you never touch anything else. These are all local, so we're doing travel within our state, within these small hubs, within our communities. Um, so there's a lot more to talk about, like zoning, um, fire marshals, uh, public safety, public outreach. Um, there have been incidents where small unmanned aircraft have been shot down, please don't do that, it's a felony. Uh, we don't wanna have those kinds of incidents with these aircraft. So thinking about how we wanna handle things within our cities and our municipalities that will support this in the way that it's best for our communities.
Look at this, those passenger ones that we're looking at, in just a few years it looks like, they can land anywhere as long as we have a pad for them to land on?
Um, there's, so there's a lot of regulation around it, so not really, this is not your backyard.
Not talking about backyard, but if the city has an area in, within the city where there's a pad. You could actually create a small terminal for them to come and go.
Correct, you could.
Without having to build an entire airport.
Absolutely, absolutely, so more like a helipad, there are restrictions like treetops and being able to do emergency. There's a lot of stuff that goes behind that, but essentially, yes, it'll become um, a more integrated form of aviation that we've got today, by far. Uh, so in terms of planning, uh, this is going to be multimodal. So it, we can't just expect people to hop on, I'll call it a pod. In Burnsville, drive here and then hop to around Mall of America and, and get their way to the, to the airport. We need to have end to end multimodal transportation, so tying to the bus system, getting the right timing, tying to the mall, getting our timing to the tram. And getting in the right places, this has to be an end to end system, um, so it's going to take a lot to plan for integrated mobility. Uh, at MINDOT, we have begun the air mobility strategic plan, which is one of our now family of plans. Um, Dan has been asked to be on the work group for that, uh, we also just uh, we're awarded a partnership with NASA. Collaboration to start looking into some of this technology as well. Um, so there's a lot going on at the state, we highly encourage you to be involved, um, and keep touch with this. And uh, we'd love to keep talking about it as these things mature.
So if we're looking at more and more of. Although I don't, I don't know that you can call them drones, if they're not flown by someone else and the per, the pilot is inside of them, they're an electric plane. But if we're looking at more and more of those and we're looking at something similar. From when we switched from horses to cars, what do we need buses and cars for? Why do we need roads at that point?
Sure.
Would you not be looking at, don't really, don't really need them, that's now valuable real, real estate that could be used for a higher purpose?
Um, I think that's a conversation to be had, I don't think that there is enough. It would be tough to imagine enough capacity with these aircraft, so most of the ones that we showed, for example, this is a Joby aircraft. It's a four passenger, they have some that are eight or ten. There has been a lot of talk about taking, how many cars we're gonna take off the road with these aircraft, and there's a big debate about whether that's something to even look at. Because maybe this is your urgency trip, maybe this is, um, you now with, you know, changes with COVID, work from home. You now only have to go to MSP or only, only to your Minneapolis office once a week or twice a week. Um, I, I think it would be tough to replace something as efficient as a bus line or a tram line with these smaller aircraft. Um, but that remains to be seen, I, I, you know, that's why we're, that's why we're here and doing this, absolutely.
I think this is about a complete mobility system.
Correct.
And it's not just one and not the other. Um, council member Vince Workman.
Thank you, um, just a couple of quick questions, the ones that I've seen are loud. Has there been any discussion about the impacts of the noise that at least the small ones make?
Yeah, so noise is fascinating, it's one of the things that NASA will be working with us in the collaboration. Um, noise, there's a bunch of factors, I had no idea when I got into this, so there's noise and there's annoyance, right? When you see a, a medevac go over you, that's interesting. When you see a different type of helicopter, that's noisy, so there's that factor. And then there's also noise is, and I'm not an engineer, but it's like an exponential curve. So they are saying that these aircraft are significantly quieter because of electric engine, because there are four to eight rotors instead of one. Um, because of all these engineering dynamics, that they're significantly quieter than the helicopters that we experience today. They'll also be flying higher than a traditional helicopter that's at five hundred or seven hundred feet. Um, I haven't heard one, so I cannot confirm, but that is something that will be important to our cities. There are currently statutes with the Mercedes Minnesota that incentivize quiet aircraft. Um, interestingly, as we talked about, statutes need to change, those noise, the bottom of that noise category is probably way louder than anything we'll ever see with these aircraft. So looking at how we want to mold that over time, how this might work out long term is definitely a factor.
Then can I ask one more question? Thinking about the smaller ones, has there been any discussion about, um, you know, privacy concerns? You know, you can build a fence to keep people out of your backyard, but how do you keep people out of the sky above your backyard? Is that something that's?
Yep.
Talked about at all?
For the small unmanned aircraft, like the little guys or even these?
Yeah, the kinda high pitched.
Yeah. Yep, so I do hear a lot about that, and there's a couple of considerations, so there's, and I'm not a lawyer. But the reasonable expectation of privacy, um, and we think of that in a traditional view with like a privacy fence. When you're flying a drone aircraft, that doesn't, that's harder to regulate. Um, but all private, most privacy complaints are handled at the local level. So with your own police and fire, there are, um, the same privacy laws that apply to peeping toms, voyeurism applies to drones too. So somebody who is being aggressive and appropriate, those same um, rules should be applied to the drone pilot that they would be to anybody else with a camera. Um, there are different considerations, you're taking a picture of a house next door, you gotta back up to get that picture. There's consideration there, but there's a point where that crosses a line and that's beyond what I can advise. Um, but that is a, a topic to discuss and something that, that concerns a lot of people.
Reason why I asked is we were, I was at a wedding a couple of weeks ago and they had a drone, and when it got up there, you couldn't even hear it. I mean, it was, if you didn't know that was there, you wouldn't ever know it was there. Um, and I'm sure the cameras and the technology on those are getting even more impressive, so.
So one thing that I also mentioned is I mentioned that rule change from the FAA in January. That requires all drones to have this beacon, essentially, an electronic beacon. Anybody with a cellphone, just like you can track Delta coming into MSP when your cousin flies in, drones will be on a similar app. Um, anybody can have it, you know, it remains to, up to industry, whether it's gonna be free or paid or, or what. But that signal is public, the person who owns that aircraft will be identifiable, identifiable by the police. But not by the average citizen, but they will know that there's a drone in the area. So if that is somebody's concern, once that technology becomes available, which the law's already passed, it just has to be, become mature. That would ease a lot of those concerns.
Thank you.
Some of the discussions and some of the meetings that I've been involved in has to do with privacy.
Absolutely.
That's a huge issue, and um, these technologies are wonderful, they can be used for good and for bad. And there was a big discussion about uh, um, good people can use it for good outcomes. And then there are the criminal folks who will use it for criminal purposes. And uh, there was a lot of debate around the, the security and privacy of, of citizens.
Absolutely, and one of the things that we recommend when we talk to cities is um, do a lot of outreach, we can help, you know, I do a lot of presentations. I were also volunteer with the FAA to do presentations in cities, I did a lot of time working for our community ed, um, doing outreach. The more people know how to fly within the rules and also as a good citizen, the more the outliers will be outliers. So um, I think that's something, hopefully, uh, other organizations can offer that as well, or schools, um, other places. But the more outreach, the better.
Yeah.
Okay. So in city planning, then you would be looking at planning for things such as. Looking at structural changes to how you build so that you have roofs which can be supporting pads.
That's one consideration, so identifying where, uh, you know, could we just put it on top of a multimodal transit station? Could you put it on your top of your bus station, um, but also what are the power requirements? These are all electric vehicles, you, we can't swap batteries because of regulations within the FAA, so it has to be charged. Are they gonna charge here, how many watts does that pull? Do you need a weather system on site, can it tie into your emergency weather system? So there is a wide w- range of considerations, and we honestly, we don't know them all. That's why we're putting together the work group and working with other states and NASA to, to get there. But there will be a lot of, a lot of tail to this technology.
Well, and I mean, you're talking about, um. I don't know, I, I've, it sounds like you're talking about something in a narrower area than. Such as like you can Uber or you can plane Uber. Like, why would you not, if that technology exists? That's, that's going to be an area that it goes into. Um, so you're not going to. Go to the bus station to hop on the plane to Uber to the grocery store, do you know what I mean? So like, that's not feasible, and you're saying that right now you can't swap out batteries. Perhaps that's something which would change because.
That would be an FAA.
That would make a huge thing, yeah, I know, that's, that's a federal thing and, you know, we, we know they have safety in mind. Wonderful decision making capabilities, so I'm sure that will happen soon. Um, but, so I, you know, I'm looking, so is that some of the discussions you're having as well with local communities? Which is. You know, because Uber hit and then cities freaked out, and immediately a lot of them banned it, and they were like, oh crap, well we can't really do that. So now we gotta figure, are we trying to get ahead of this?
Trying to get ahead of it, and one thing to consider when we're thinking about this is they, these aircraft, they have a lot of, of needs at that infrastructure location. And, and a lot of technology, a lot of equipment, and that makes them pricier than a car Uber. So there are some concerns about what's that gonna cost and access.
Well, it's pricier now.
Uber is?
No.
Aviation?
Aviation is, uh, uh, these are pricier now. But just like a few years ago, it was very expensive to get one of those little drones as a toy, now you can get one for twelve bucks. So I can't imagine that they're going to stay expensive. I mean, the price will come down if, if, if demand is going up, and you showed charts that demand is really going up. So that means there will be more people entering it and price will go down, so that's gonna drive it into other uses.
Probably, and um, it's a tricky conversation. Because there's also a lot of requirements about separation with these aircraft, like we won't be taking it from our house to the grocery store. Uh, it will be, at least definitely in the beginning, singular routes. That have defined courses, um, probably unscheduled service. And then it will mature into some more, maybe, I mean, and I think, always go back to the judgements, like, you know, he hops on his little pod on top of his roof. And flies wherever he wants to go, that's not where we're looking initially, um, because there's so much more that has to. Even drone delivery is really tricky right now because of trying to avoid another aircraft, trying to avoid a bird, trying to avoid towers, you know, all these. Windmills and all these other factors, so it's, it's a conversation to have, and it's, it's still days of conversations.
And this is fascinating, and I'm, I'm hoping these are the conversations because, um, people are gonna do that. I mean, you can say that we're not going to do that, but people are. I mean, if, if people figure out how to do something, they're going to do that. You know, just like you say, it's tricky with, with drone deliveries. Well, I know people who are doing drone deliveries. They may not be doing them in a certain manner, but they're doing them because it's possible, so they're going to do them. So I'm, I'm hopeful that, because you know, like, like your organization and our city, we're always looking thirty to forty years ahead. So I'm, and I appreciate that the conversation we're having is like at the ten year, little more mark. But we have to start putting in our plans, things for thirty to forty years ahead. So I'm thinking in thirty to forty years, yeah, maybe people are. Like, they don't have a car, they are buzzing to the grocery store, or it's just automated and they send their thing there and it picks it up and they don't even have to go. You know, you know what I mean, right? Cause like, this is exciting, this is very cool stuff. So I'm hopeful that the conversations that we're having push more into that thirty to forty year what if. Because, you know, upper level government doesn't turn on a dime, neither do we, so.
Yeah, well, you know, this is wonderful and we hope, Katrina, that you can come back in a year. Tell us how it's progressing as we continue to, to do this, but thank you for coming in and talking with us. And there are still a lot of issues to, um, to explore. And uh, and, and to have conversations about. And so, and I know that our engineers and our transportation people are all a part of that conversation. Not only on a state level, um, local level. Not only in a state level, um, local level and on the federal level. And that's where a lot of this funding, uh, for the infrastructure, uh, framework that's coming in is all a part of that, that funds a lot of this, uh, research. So thank you. Uh, Dan, Kay?
Well, I wanna thank you. Nice to meet you in person and I just sent you an email. Our county commissioner, Liz Workman, is watching and is very intrigued. She's also a chair of our I-35 Solutions Alliance, which is a quarter coalition from Minneapolis to Elko. And, um, and so there's, I'm sure this presentation is going to pique a lot of interest by a lot of parties to, uh, to come see it. I, I just wanted to, uh, cite one of the things with the National League of Cities, um, uh, unmanned aircraft or advanced, uh, aircraft is, um, Christiansburg, Virginia was a host of a drone pilot test. Uh, and the mayor, uh, from there spoke and talked about their year-long, uh, test and, uh, presented and addressed, there was a lot of great Q and A and addressed a lot of these, these types of issues. But there it was, uh, medicine and, and food, fast food and, and medicines to, to really test, you know, three pound max type of drone delivery. And so the, these types of tests have been going on around the country. And the reason I brought that up is specifically the World Economic Forums, um, you know, has invited us and they shared this with the council and, and our city manager, uh, to become part of their, um, cities, uh, and regional coalition. And to become a member, it doesn't really cost anything. You just have to take it up as a policy that you wanna establish some sort of governance policy for, based on what everybody's learned, uh, for, uh, drones. And then be willing to host a test, much like Christiansburg did. So by doing that, if the city of Burnsville, uh, can get through that process and we can go through the governance and we can establish a policy position based on all the knowledge that's out there available today and open the invitation, we can potentially attract, uh, what Christiansburg, Virginia did. And that would dramatically, uh, uh, help the state of Minnesota and certainly put, uh, the city of Burnsville on the national map, uh, for doing something like this. It's coming, as, as council member Schultz said, she knows somebody that's doing a dr- a delivery. Um, you know, they're, they're sort of happening in, uh, uh, in smaller incubating type of environments. But, um, I, I would love for the city of Burnsville to, um, to participate in that coalition, develop the policy and then, uh, invite a company. And there's more and more companies getting into this and they're looking for cities who have gone through the governance, who are welcoming, uh, a pilot program. And I think, um, we'll all learn a lot about it. I mean, there's the, the, Madam Mayor, you pointed out the, uh, the security, uh, concern. Um, and I think, uh, Katrina, I believe you were the one that answered the question. It's currently against the law in the state of Minnesota for anyone to use any kind of camera to view someone's private residence, right? So there, the first concern is, well, I don't want a drone flying down and taking pictures inside my house. It's il- it's illegal for that to happen today.
Yeah, it's like Kara says, there's people who are doing things that they're.
So, so it's, it's not about establishing a law, it's about enforcing a law.
Walk up to your house and peek in the windows too, so.
Yeah. So anyway, we're, uh, I, I just wanna plug, um, that Katrina is one of the leading people in the country in this area. And Minnesota is very, very benefi- we're benefiting by, and very, to have you leading this division. And, um, uh, her department, uh, was one of five cities in the entire country selected to be part of this, uh, work group program and advanced something. So we already are getting some attention thanks to you in the state of Minnesota. And I'd like to see the city of Burnsville capitalize on that and move forward on some of this other stuff.
I think with some of the information that, uh, Katrina and her folks have already, uh, gotten and put together, we have a medical campus here in town. And that is an area that, uh, already you're transporting o- organs for transplant. So, you know, we can, there are some things that we can do, but it'll be great to have you come back. And thank you so much for tonight's presentation. Uh, I remember going through this about three years ago, uh, with Dakota County. And at that time, we only had one pilot, licensed pilot for drones in the county. And that was, uh, with the sheriff's office. And, um, and so, uh, I sat through that presentation and, um, it, it was very interesting and, um, but I'm sure that we have more pilots in Dakota County than it was about three, three, four years ago when I sat through all of that. Yeah.
Yeah, I, I live in Apple Valley and I know those, those folks very well and they, they have a great drone program. They're a leader in the state in that, so they've got a lot.
That's why I, I was there because I wanted to learn more about what they were doing and, and, uh, m- met the folks from the, the sheriff's office, the, and, and the pilot. And then he did a demonstration and so forth. Yeah. But come back again. It'll be great to understand, uh, how it all progresses and where things are at.
Wonderful, thank you.
And we'll pay attention, um, not only in the state level. And I think, uh, are you there through TAB? Are, are you connected with Katrina's through TAB?
No, I've, I'm bringing a lot of this information to TAB. This is, um, a different path. It's not through TAB. But I'm, I've already spoke to Chair, uh, Hovland about, uh, bringing some of this information forward because it's, there, it's just not common, right? It's not something that a lot of people have been involved in or exposed to. It's a very new, quickly evolving subject matter that's coming in.
And we've been talking about all of this, uh, at the US Conference of Mayors and the thing that, um, we all need to understand is that it's growing quickly. And so we have to be on top of it and, uh, there are a lot of issues. As you said, there are many tails. And so you have to begin to look at all of those tails and understand the issues that are around it. Yeah. But I think you have some money in the ARPA.
Hear me?
Well, I, no.
Do I have money?
No, no. It's in, it's in the framework for the, um, uh, infrastructure.
Oh, yes, yes. Yeah, there is a lot coming to drones.
In the infrastructure framework. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Cause I, cause I was going through that, um, uh, today and saw that. Yeah. Okay. Well, again, thank you so much.
Great. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
We would love to have you back, especially when we're a test site for drones.
Absolutely.
We'll take a look at it. Yeah, thank you so much.
Madam Mayor, I wanna pass on a few facts that came out of, uh, an NLC, the last actually meeting we had in April. Um, this is, uh, a city the size of, uh, probably more like Minneapolis. I think there's 445,000 in Minneapolis. It's a little under a half a million, I believe. Um, recover, so a fully developed drone, um, for commercial, uh, flight, um, and delivery. Biggest benefit is delivery. It recovers $582 million in time saved because you're now having, uh, something delivered rather than getting your car and getting it or even having someone else get in a car and deliver, which is happening today. It's a, which then saves 294 million road miles, reduces 580 car crashes per year in a city that size and reduces 113,900 tons of CO2 a year. Because these drones that are delivering these packages that are going by a truck today, obviously don't emit CO2. So they, they did a pretty extensive study and, uh, some very interesting sustainability, uh, statements coming out of these things.
Why don't you share that, um, email with all of us?
Be happy to. I have gazillions of pages of notes from the last several months. I'd be happy to throw these out to you if you wanna read.
Well, right now we have, yeah, yeah, yeah. Right now we, we have an agenda to go through. Okay. The next item on the agenda is the review of the Natural Resource Master Plan, um, and, uh, public survey and proposed plan update. And, um, and I believe Caleb is. Yeah. Yeah.
The goldfish guy.
Yes.
You're famous.
So, yeah, and so, yeah, everybody, yeah, and so Caleb, you're gonna have to, uh, introduce yourself to everyone because you don't come before us as often, but it's, uh, it's good to see you. Cause I, and, um, and I think, uh, tonight, um, um, Doug Mensing is also here. There's Doug, thank you. And he's, uh, one of our consultants. And of course, everybody knows Daryl Jacobson, who's been with us and has been part of our natural resource manager for a long time. Caleb?
Yes, uh, my name is Caleb Ashling. I'm a natural resources specialist for the city and I've been here, uh, around 10 years.
Yeah, yeah. But you're at the other building and we don't see you as often over here, so welcome, welcome.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yeah, we see your name in background material and anything, but yes, so good to see you.
Yeah, thanks for having me. I'm excited to be here.
Yeah.
You can take it away. I think it's up, so.
All right, uh, uh, before we jump into the Natural Resources Master Plan update, I've been asked to give a separate update on, uh, a story related to goldfish that it sounds like council members are aware of now.
World's aware of it.
Yeah, it's all over.
Yes, I just wanted to give you a quick background on that, uh, how that kinda came to be. Um, a- as you know, uh...
This is not the first time that we've had problems with goldfish at Keller.
We've, we've had goldfish out there before, um, but, uh, we were doing a special investigation out there this year. Uh, we're doing some sampling. And so, yeah, we partner with the city of Apple Valley to manage the lake. And, uh, we, we have done a lot of water quality improvement projects out there. Uh, water quality has been improving in recent years and we wanna protect those investments. And along those lines, we had been getting recent reports from residents, uh, that there were some larger groups of goldfish. And, uh, goldfish, you know, they're small when they're, you know, in the pet store, but when they're released into the natural environment, they can grow to be a pretty sizable animal. Uh, and they can stir up the plants in the lake. They can muck up the bottom sediments and, and that can release, you know, nutrients into the water and drive algae blooms and cause other issues. Uh, so, you know, to, to try to be proactive and, and follow up on some of the, the concerns that we are seeing from residents, we worked with a company called Karp Solutions, uh, to do a fish survey out there.
There is a company for everything.
Yep, niche market.
Karp Solutions, okay.
And Karp, Karp are very similar animals related to goldfish, so, uh, they were the best company for us to work with on that. Um, and we're, you know, we're kind of in the initial stages of that survey. Uh, so we don't have all the information yet on the overall population. Uh, we're doing some sampling and we have some more sampling to do. Uh, and hopefully at the end of that, uh, we'll be able to have a decent estimate of how many goldfish are in Keller Lake. Uh, and from that, uh, we can kinda make a determination on, you know, what, uh, what we need to do. Uh, in some situations, it, it's never good to have goldfish in the lake and we definitely want people to know that. Uh, but in some situations, they may not be causing, you know, severe issues. Uh, but in the right lake, with the right conditions, they can cause a lot of problems. Um, so we're, we're, you know, using this as an opportunity to try to figure out, you know, what the situation is at Keller Lake. Uh, we don't necessarily think they're taking over the lake, but, uh, we wanna try to be proactive and figure out what's going on so we can protect all those water quality investments that have been made out there. Um, and then on the, you know, the public engagement side of, of things with this, you know, it seemed like a great opportunity, uh, to try to get the word out to residents that releasing goldfish into our ponds and lakes is, uh, not, not what they should be doing and actually illegal and can cause a lot of unintended consequences. Uh, so we worked with our communications department who we often work with and collaborate on, on trying to, to get engaging messages out there. And they definitely managed to, to do that for us.
Big way.
Uh, yeah, so Caleb, like Caleb mentioned, Caleb's great to work with when it comes to getting out interesting messages. They often send us photos from the field. We didn't really think twice about posting this. It's, you know, it was pretty par for the course. We were not prepared for the, um, the reach that it got. This, these were very rough numbers that I crunched today just from, from Facebook and Twitter and just our posts. Um, so this afternoon, we were at about 16 million impressions with the number of times these posts had been seen. Two million engagements, that's clicks, shares, likes, um, you know, almost 8,000 shares and 640 comments on our, on our post alone. Caleb will probably regret working with us at this point because, um, you know, after things go viral on social media, of course you get real media calling you, right? So, uh, first our local friends called us, which is great. We always like that. We heard from all of the local friends and then we started hearing from the national folks, which was also very fun for a little while. Uh, and it kept coming. Um, Caleb and Daryl have been great at doing a bunch of interviews. Today, we started getting calls from the international media. And so we were fielding questions and requests from Germany, France, Sweden, the UK. Uh, and like I said, Caleb and Daryl have, have been great sports about taking on as many interviews as their busy schedules could fit. Um, but it has been, I'm sure you've all seen it on your social media feeds. It has been everywhere. Um, it's been a lot of fun, but I think, you know, four or five days of this, we're probably, we're probably feeling good on it now.
Ready to move on to something else.
This never happened before anywhere else?
Not to get 16 million impressions.
I think you should take over economic development pages.
It has been a lot of fun, but we thought we'd, you know, come address the giant goldfish in the room that everybody's been talking about.
I'm getting asked by people if they can buy the fish because they have ponds in their, in their yards and they want them.
I do not think that would be allowed by the DNR.
Revenue stream, Kara.
Yeah.
I know it. I'm thinking.
Stream, pardon the pun.
We could, we could have a little Burnsville Fish Auction.
We could put it on eBay and potentially.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'd be a great fundraiser.
Thank you, uh, Caleb and Daryl will have to have a conversation with the state and say, can we? Because one of the things that you had put out is that take it back to the, be- before putting it into the lake, take it back to the store and see if they can resell it.
Yep, yeah. Store, find friends, someone else, anywhere but releasing it into the wild.
Yeah, that's, that's what staff has put out in one of the communication pieces.
You belong here, but not goldfish.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's like, uh, Chris had mentioned, it's, it's been fun and we intended it for our local community. Um, but it's been a great platform for us to also reach a broader audience about, you know, goldfish and invasive species in general. So, uh, I think that's a, a good thing.
Yeah, now if they were coy, that would be something different.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All sorts of different, uh, animals to look out for.
Yeah.
I'm gonna slide over to this chair here, I think. All right. All right, so yeah, so that was just a little bit of a side diversion from our, our main reason for being here tonight. Um, so thank you for indulging that. Uh, but the, the reason that we are here to present to you tonight is to talk about our update to the Natural Resources Master Plan. And, uh, a- as directed by council, we started that update process, uh, back in, uh, April. And we're working with our natural resources team, uh, including the forestry side of things. And, uh, Doug and other folks over with RES Consulting to get that done. And we're kind of, you know, we're still working through some of the early, uh, development stages of that process and we wanted to come here tonight to give you an update. So I, I'm gonna tell you a little bit, just a real brief, uh, outline of the plan, uh, some accomplishments of the, the last planned period. I'll tell you a little bit about the public survey that we conducted to, to look at what's important to the community related to this. Uh, talk about some of the draft goals that we've developed, uh, and then also some of the content updates and next steps that we've got planned. Uh, so as I think, uh, council knows, our, our Natural Resources Master Plan for the city was originally passed in 1999. Uh, then updated again by council in 2007. Uh, and it, it's been a really great document for the city to move our, our, and protection of our natural resources forward. And now we're kinda coming to the time where it was time to update it again. Uh, and the Natural Resources Plan really, uh, it guides the management that we do in our parkland, especially related to our, our nat- uh, natural areas and our trees. Uh, but it also does guide the work that we do with the community, uh, because a lot of our, our natural areas are also on private land. Uh, and protecting, uh, natural resources throughout the city is gonna involve the, uh, private, uh, landowners and residents as well. And so we wanted to talk a little bit, uh, uh, about the achievements that we've had over the last planned period. Uh, and we're gonna frame that, uh, through some, some of the ecological restoration work that we do, some of the forestry work that we do and also, uh, engagement with the community. Uh, and one of the objectives of the last, uh, plan was to really ex- Uh, and one of the objectives of the last, uh, plan was to really expand, uh, the restoration work, um, that we do, uh, throughout our, our natural areas. And, uh, you know, what that really means is removing invasive species, uh, and restoring native plant community and wildlife habitat. Uh, and we have significantly expanded, uh, our efforts, uh, over the, the last planned period. Uh, we have, uh, over two hundred and forty acres, uh, under active restoration work right now, uh, in twenty-seven sites across the city. Uh, then another objective of that plan was that, uh, to create a sustainability demonstration project here at the Civic Center campus. And what that became was our Civic Center Prairie, which is the prairie planting here at Nicklet and Civic Center Parkway. Uh, and that plan was intended to be a, a demonstration to the community about the benefits of taking an area that was a low-use turf. So that area all used to be turf and mowed, fertilized, you know, pretty high inputs. Uh, taking, taking an area like that and converting it to, uh, habitat that's gonna be lower cost, uh, to manage, uh, gonna provide habitat for wildlife and have other water quality and other environmental benefits. Uh, this has been a great way for us to showcase a- all those environmental benefits and we've definitely heard from residents who have seen it and then taken it as an example for their, their own property.
And taking the seeds also, which is very nice in a fall and I see a lot of the folks out there taking the seeds so that they can pl- replant it in their areas.
Yeah, yep, and we're, we're happy to see that, that kinda, this be a message that can spread throughout the community. And one really fun part of this, uh, project is that, uh, uh, two, about two years ago, the US Fish and Wildlife Service, uh, you know, we're in the area, they stopped by and found the federally endangered rusty patch, uh, bumblebee. Um, a pretty high population living at that site, so, you know, through, through this plan, which directed this work, we were able to take an area that was providing really no habitat and, and now have a species that's quite rare, um, at, uh, using it. So, that's been a really great part of the, the story of that site.
And, yeah, so we, we did ask our parks commission, so I'm sure they will be asking you uh, for an update this year on those bees and how, how that's going. Are they thriving? Do we have a lot of them? So.
Yeah, yeah, and we are, uh, we're, uh, we have staff that is doing some surveys in some of our sites to look for them. And the Fish and Wildlife Service also let us know recently that they are revisiting our Civic Center site to take a look, so. We should have some info- information for you later this year.
Yeah, that and, uh, our monarch butterfly, at one point we had planted a whole lot of s- plant species for the monarch butterflies. Some were over at the Ames Center, but then we went through the recession and wasn't kept up. So, I'd like to hear what we're doing with some of that.
Yeah, we've, I think all the work that we're doing, we try to keep monarchs in mind and the milkweeds and other species that are important. So that's another thing we could certainly update on. Uh, and, and yeah, so other achievements, uh, you know, uh, we've also implemented some large grant-funded restoration projects to really leverage the, the funds that we have by obtaining and working with agencies like the DNR or Dakota County Soil and Water Conservation District. And one project we like to highlight is the work that we're doing out at Terrace Oaks Park. Um, and we now have, uh, forty-five acres of, uh, some really beautiful savanna out there. Um, and we plan on expanding that by another twenty-two acres, uh, over this upcoming winter with another grant that we've recently received. Uh, so that's been really well received by the public and I think it's been a nice, nice place to showcase, uh, the benefits of savanna habitat. Uh, then the plan also directed us to implement monitoring programs in some of our natural areas. Uh, so we have, uh, plant survey areas and then as we discussed, uh, some pollinator survey work as well. And we visit these sites every year, uh, and that helps us track invasive species trends or other trends in the, the restoration sites over time that we can then, uh, use to, to make informed decisions, uh, as things change. Uh, then on the forestry side of things, uh, this plan also directed the creation of a boulevard tree planting program, uh, which has been implemented successfully and helps us maintain that important, uh, canopy cover along our, our streets. Uh, and, uh, we also implemented the boulevard tree pruning plan because making sure that we are doing regular pruning on our trees is also vital to maintaining them long-term. Uh, then we've continued to operate the very, uh, successful, uh, uh, tree sale, uh, which is always a fun event that residents like to, to have an easy source of trees.
I bought a maple two years ago and I bet that thing has grown fifteen feet already. It's crazy.
Yeah, our city forester, Dave, uh, who I'm sure you know, uh, does a great job of getting us, uh, great trees. And then on the forestry side of things, we also have, uh, increased our disease tree management in areas of, uh, Dutch elm disease, uh, and oak wilt. Uh, then, uh, we've also developed and implemented the Emerald Ashbore Plan. And that plan has, uh, been a really, uh, successful investment at protecting our ash trees and really buffered us against some of the worst impacts of EAB. Uh, so we're seeing a, you know, a lot lower impacts than some of the other communities in the area, which has been, uh, really great. Uh, then on the public engagement side of things, uh, the plan directed the creation of the buckthorn pickup program, uh, which was an opportunity for residents to, uh, to, to make it easier for residents to re- remove buckthorn. Uh, we created that in twenty-eleven. Uh, basically what that does is it's a service for residents to sign up where, you know, they do the, the removal of the buckthorn, but, uh, we pick it up at the curb site for them. And we work with, uh, primarily neighborhood groups, uh, as a way to try to drive interest and discussion i- in neighborhoods on tackling the buckthorn, uh, issue together. Uh, and through that program, we've, uh, removed, uh, five thousand cubic yards of buckthorn, uh, which is about enough to fill one and a half Olympic-sized swimming pools. So a lot of, a lot of buckthorn removed through that program. Uh, then we've also implemented, uh, the annual, uh, native plant market, uh, which is a, a really fun event uh, for, to make it really easy for residents to use environmentally friendly native plants in their landscaping. Uh, and, uh, just over the last five years, uh, we've had, uh, more than, uh, four thousand four hundred people attend that event. Um, and over twenty-seven thousand native plants have, uh, gone out into the community through that program. So it's really having a, a good impact and engaging a lot of people. Uh, and then we've greatly expanded our educational resources for, for residents through our website, uh, and through handouts so we can make it easy for people to, to have the tools that they need to be successful in their private land management. Um, and then we've also created an annual workshop, uh, series that allows us to engage residents on issues like buckthorn, pollinators, uh, rain gardens, um, and, uh, uh, native plantings. And, uh, just as an example, in two thousand and nineteen, between those four workshops, we had, uh, two hundred and fifty residents attend total. So, uh, it's hard to get people out, uh, with their busy schedules, but we've engaged a lot of folks through, through that program successfully. So that was just a quick look at some of the achievements, uh, of that last planned period. Uh, and now, uh, kind of, we'll switch course from looking backwards to looking forwards with this plan update. Uh, and one of the first steps we wanted to do with this process was to survey the public, to gauge what was important to the community as we work through the next steps. Uh, so we worked with our consultant to develop a survey, uh, um, and we really worked hard to, to get the message out to the community on that despite some challenges, uh, with COVID. Um, and, and I'd also love to highlight to, uh, working with, uh, Chris and our communications team to, they did an awesome job in helping us, uh, engage the community through social media, email blasts, um, some really engaging postcards and, uh, yard signs that we placed out at, uh, some of our parks. Uh, and we also engaged people at some of the events that we had and through some direct park intercepts where we had staff on site at some of the parks that are most popular, trying to have conversations with people. And, uh, the survey was a, a thirteen-question survey. It was open for five weeks and we had, uh, six hundred and eighty-five people respond, which we were, uh, a satisf- uh, we thought was, uh, a good response from the community. Um, and we'll try to, to, uh, do a high-level summary of some of the results for you. Uh, so one of the first questions was, you know, where are people, uh, most frequently visiting the parks? Especially related to those that have natural areas, 'cause that's the, the focus of this plan. And, uh, this goes in order of how people responded, but some of our bigger natural areas, Alum Magnet Terrace, uh, Sunset Pond, uh, uh, parks that are fairly large, have pretty extensive trail systems, uh, were some of the most popular ones, uh, from our survey. And then we also wanted to find out, you know, how are people engaging with the natural areas while they're out there? And, uh, of course, you know, our great trail system with, uh, our paved and unpaved trails was one of the most common ways people were using our natural areas. Uh, people are also out there to, you know, spend time with their, their family and friends, take a hike, uh, uh, that type of thing. And then people are also out there to, uh, have a little time to themselves, um, in, in nature and enjoy some quiet space. Uh, then of course, there's also folks who are out there to, uh, birdwatch and otherwise enjoy wildlife. And then we asked, uh, the community what, what some of their top concerns were, uh, related to natural resources in Burnsville. And, uh, one thing we heard, uh, was, you know, that people wanna make sure we're protecting our natural areas from development, which I think we've done a good job of doing, but people value the, the natural areas that we, we have. Um, and they wanna make sure that they're protected as much as possible. Uh, then people also want us to maintain the quality of our existing natural areas and our trees. So they wanna, again, protect those resources that we have. Uh, and then as council knows, uh, water quality is really important. We've got some amazing lakes in town and, uh, the, the community wants us to protect those. Um, and then the, we heard a lot about pollinators, uh, that's a, uh, an issue that's really important for residents and making sure we're managing for those, along with doing invasive species removal.
How do you safely get a, get rid of Japanese beetles?
Flamethrower. Flamethrower.
I wanna maintain my tomato plants.
It's challenging.
They're hardy buggers.
I know they are.
Japanese beetles aren't my area of expertise.
Okay, this side of the UK is a part of this thing, so you might know.
Our forester gets a lot of calls when the Japanese beetles, uh, get high in numbers and unfortunately, there's not a lot that can be, that can be done with those.
Really?
Better manually pick them up.
Manually pick them up. Yeah, feed them to the goldfish.
Okay, Caleb, you can proceed.
All right, uh.
A little detour.
Uh, so, yeah, so the next, uh, question we asked was what type of projects residents were most interested in on their private property? You know, how are, how are they looking to improve the environment through their work? Um, and things we heard were, you know, native plants and pollinator gardens, especially related to, you know, providing habitat for wildlife. Uh, they wanna be controlling invasive species, uh, and they also wanna be, making sure they're doing a good job of, you know, caring for the trees that they have, you know, planting the right trees in the right place, that type of thing. And then we, we wanted to hear from the community on, uh, where there might be barriers for people in, uh, doing the environmentally friendly landscaping that they wanna do. And, you know, you know, one thing we heard was that the cost can sometimes be prohibitive in some situations, uh, and also sometimes lack of knowledge, just they are interested in doing something, but maybe not quite sure how to proceed. And I think kinda, uh, we're transitioning now from, uh, our survey results to talk a little bit more about some of the, the draft goals that we've developed, uh, through this process and formed by our survey and by, uh, discussions with our staff. And I think Ryan was gonna hit on a couple of things here first.
Exactly. So what we wanna do is we wanna hear from the community about what they want and then we're trying to tie it to your, um, core values and, um, your, uh, strategic, strategic priorities as well. So the, um, the values are shown up there and, you know, this is pretty easy to tie to. There's lots of things. But stewardship is, uh, what you've said is really important to you and we care for the resources to best serve the community today and tomorrow. And then adaptability, we're gonna create a better future, so we're gonna be constantly adapting to what's happening. And then, just next slide. And then strategic priorities, there are six of them, but, um, the one we're focusing on is sustainability here. And then, um, as you can understand, this fits right into that tailor-made, uh, unnatural resource management plan. So, um, I won't go through it all that, but basically what we're trying to do is tailor what we heard with what your priorities are and, uh, to come up with what the future of natural resources looks like via this plan. With that, I'll turn it over to Caleb to go through a couple of what we're planning on for the future.
All right, so, uh, yeah, thank you, Ryan. Uh, and so taking some of the, the sub-goals from that sustainability section, uh, the first of which was, uh, creating programs and opportunities for the community to be involved. Uh, some of the goals that we've set in that area, uh, is we wanna provide more public engagement opportunities, uh, through volunteer events. I think, uh, within natural resources, we have a great opportunity to engage people through things like seed collections, um, or wildflower planting projects, uh, where we can bring people together to, to do something fun and feel like they've made a difference, but also move our program forward with positive things in the parks. Uh, so we'd like to try to build that program. Uh, and then we also wanna encourage hands-on experience with nature, uh, whether that's through partnering to do things like, with our rec department for things like nature play areas, uh, which we have one of, uh, Terrace Oaks, uh, East Park.
Yeah.
Um, we're also doing events like, the picture up here is a meet and greet event we did with our buckthorn-eating goats with, uh, local school groups, um, so finding ways to engage people in, in nature. And then we wanna continue to offer a series of engaging workshops and try to make sure that we're, uh, always adapting those to, to fill community needs and looking for opportunities, uh, new opportunities that might come up. And then, huh, you know, one of the other, uh, sub-goals is investing in programs that focus on maintaining and preserving our natural resources. Uh, so again, you know, we heard from the community that maintaining those existing resources is important. Uh, so that's gonna be an obvious goal to continue with over this next planned period. Uh, but we also wanna expand our restoration efforts to remove more invasive species, uh, provide more wildlife habitat and provide all those other environmental benefits to the community. Uh, then again, we, we wanna put a emphasis on maintaining our shoreline buffers, uh, because we know that that water quality aspect of things is really important. Um, and then we also wanna make sure we're i- increasing citywide canopy cover, uh, uh, and our, our tree canopy over time. And then supporting, uh, residents through private land conservation programs, like our buckthorn pickup program or water quality cr- uh, grants that allow us to aid residents to do the projects that are beneficial to the community. And then another sub-goal was evaluating our public spaces, uh, uh, and converting, uh, areas to naturalized states that, uh, may enhance the community. And we've done a little bit of work in that, uh, that area already with the Civic Center project that I, uh, already discussed. Um, but, uh, we wanna have a goal of looking to convert, uh, low-use turf areas, uh, where feasible to, uh, other types of habitat like prairie or, um, other low-maintenance plantings. Uh, and this photo here is a, a photo of Lake Park, um, which shows a, a two-acre, uh, a turf conversion area that happened last year, uh, in collaboration, uh, with XL Energy and also, uh, Dakota County Soil and Water Conservation District. And we wanna put in, uh, so we've been doing some of this work, but we wanna put, uh, more of an emphasis on that over the next planned period, uh, looking for those opportunities where they make sense.
Yeah, Vince?
Caleb, have you guys started converting, um, like our parks, you know, unused ball fields and that? Has that process started yet?
We've started converting ice rinks to gardens.
Yeah.
Well, the reason I ask is 'cause if there's, if, has there been any pushback? And if, but we haven't started it yet, so.
So there's that Parks Framework Plan, Update Plan, so we're, last year, we wanted to get more done, but it was very difficult to do in-house with our lack of horsepower, um, without seasonal employees. So this year, they're working on what they were gonna do last year. And then moving forward, twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-three, it should be more of those lar- bigger picture, um, small buildings or, uh, fields and that kinda thing.
And that's in the Parks Plan.
Right, so we've started taking out benches and tables that are unused. So we started some smaller things and we're gonna be moving on into the, to some larger scale things.
And this'll play into it kinda behind that.
That's the goal, right, yep. For instance, the Nicklet thing is, was just all unused turf and that's what we wanna do more and more of.
And part of that is just t- taking an inventory on what the community needs are with regard to ball fields, what, and pickleball and, and, and tennis courts. Of course, you and I know about that whole thing between pickleball players and the tennis, uh, court players and what they want. And so you have to take a look at all of that. And then there's the basketball players who are thinking that they're being left out. And we get a lot of, so we have to take a look at all of that. And if you start looking at our ball fields, you look at what's happening over at Sue Fisher Park. And then what's, what do we need there in that park needs to be? So, there's a lot. So there's a lot, because if you take away, because I think uh Sue Fisher Park is a lot of the, the girls softball leagues are out there.
I, I can't say for sure.
Garrett's not here.
Right, he does more of that stuff, but.
Yeah, but there's a lot, if you, uh, a lot that's going on with regard to all of that and in inventory.
To your point, when you start taking away, I think um you might start hearing from people.
Oh.
You wouldn't. And so that's what, where my question was going, but if we haven't crossed that bridge yet, then.
Well, I think it's a good question, Councilmember Workman, and it's also a good reminder from a staff perspective that whether it be the framework plan or this, this work specifically, that engagement's going to be key, right? That making sure that we're connecting with the, the community, asking the right questions and getting their feedback through the process as to, uh, as to make sure what the, that the work's reflecting uh the, the needs and desires of the community.
And the Parks Master Plan, that will be coming up pretty soon also.
Um, well, that was fairly, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, that was fairly recent and the number one thing there was the trails, as you know. Getting more regional trails and connections in there.
Yeah, and it focused on that, but we still have the leftover piece with regard to all of the different ball fields.
Right.
Um, how many basketball courts, all of those assets that the community need. And everybody wants something different.
That is threading the needle.
Yeah. Okay Caleb, we're doing natural resources.
One thing on that topic, I, I, I just highlighted, and I'm, I'm biased because I'm a natural resources uh person, but uh you know, some of these uh turf to native plant conversion areas, you know, they add an amenity to the parks as well. So, you know, people can come out, uh, you know, this one at Lake Park, we're gonna mow a, a path through there. You know, they can bring their kids out there, uh, there's gonna be, there's milkweed planted, they can look for monarch butterfly caterpillars, enjoy the birds, the wildflowers. So, you know, these add an amenity to the park, not just take things away, so I just wanted to highlight that.
So when you're, when you're naturalizing, are you also looking at like, uh, uh, like other plants that were native to Minnesota that are like our blueberries or our service berries or those types of plants as well, since those are native to our area? And are not only good for humans, but are really good for animals as well.
Yeah, definitely. I think um with the planning we do for restoration, it's kinda similar to planting a tree. We want to try to pick the right plants for the right place based on how much sun it's getting, you know, what the soil is like. And we're always using plants that are native to the area uh and adapted to our conditions. Um, but it's always a really diverse mix, so there's probably gonna be, you know, forty-five different species planted, uh, a mix of wildflowers and grasses and sometimes shrubs or trees depending on the situation. And they're all gonna have benefits to the environment uh and wildlife in different ways.
Okay. Good.
Alright, uh, so yeah, so qu- uh quickly moving on from our goals, a couple of other things we envisioned through this update process. Um, Ryan mentioned we wanted to be responsive to the public and integrated uh and cohesive with other city plans. We want to take a really hol- holistic approach to ecosystem management. Um, we want to make sure we have a, a public engagement section, so that has a dedicated space uh within this new plan, uh because we know that's really important to the council and the community. Um, and the, the plan will have uh, uh, goals with uh where possible, measurable outcomes, so we can evaluate the process at the end of the plan, uh along with new site recommendations that will drive some of the specific tasks on where we restore and when. And so the next steps of this process are uh in July, we're gonna start doing some of those site-specific assessments alongside our uh consultants from RES. Uh, then we'll, uh with that information and other uh comments that, that we've gathered, uh we'll uh do the bulk of the update to the Natural Resources Master Plan, uh then take it to a public open house in October, uh followed by bringing it to the draft plan to the Parks and Natural Resources Commission and uh back to you folks here at council. And hopefully we'll have our final deliverables in hand uh by January twenty twenty-two. And with that all, any questions?
Well, uh, not questions, but comments. So I want to thank you for all of this, because I look at all of this and sitting in my seat for twenty-six years, I've seen the beginning of um the, this plan, the uh natural resource plan in nine, from nineteen ninety-nine, which was also the same year that we adopted the Sustainability Plan. And to see both of them progress in this way. And then following that was the uh water quality and then to have two lakes come out of the impaired waters list. So, thank you to all of you, to staff, because we can make the decisions and you put it together, but then again, you have to deliver. It's hard to get two lakes um off the impaired waters list. And we've done that. And then to see what's happening in our natural resources and the canopy trees, I can see that now. Didn't back in the late nineties, but now we, I can see the canopy, uh canopy trees and all of the uh species, the native species that um you planted. Um, not only here at um campus, Civic Center Campus, but also the partnership with XL over in North River Hills. That's coming along quite nicely. I think Kara, you and I were there when we originated, we planted in the rain.
Yes, we did.
And uh now to go back and take a look at what's um happened there and everything around. And those natural areas at Terrace Oak, Terrace Oaks Parks, those natural play areas, I get a lot of people talking to me about how wonderful that is and if we're going to expand the natural play area. Because little kids enjoy um exploring all of that. And so that's really, really wonderful. And I just like the fact that we're protecting the native savanna, the oak savanna. And I remember back when we were trying to protect the um, um the savanna oaks and people would say, well, we need to develop them. Well, look, we protected it and it looks wonderful. These are, these are natural resources um that makes our community what it is. Um, so thank you, uh, and I look forward to everything. I also like the QR codes all over the city, because I walk and it's in, in the walkways. So you can put your camera over there and it pops up and it tells you what you're gonna do. And so east um, um, over on that I think it's on tr- on uh Traveler's Trail, where the park over on uh Traveler's Trail. Yeah, and you have all of those. So when you have all of those signs all around and you're out walking, I do it and I see other people doing it, you know, you just hover over the QR code and.
You're right, they do work.
And it works, you know, and it's, there it is. So great work um around the community and it's, and you guys are putting it out all over the place. So, thank you.
It would be fun to see photos from when these activities were started and then present day, to have those side by side.
Oh.
That would be, I think, very impactful.
We didn't do a good job of taking photos back then.
It's like when you do a home remodeling project and then you're like, oh, yeah, I needed to do the before.
I mean, I go back now for the heart of the city and how bad it used to look like. We didn't take a lot of those photos and what it is now. And then I look at some of the areas that we now have really nice canopy trees, where we didn't have any trees. They were spindly little things and now they're really nice. So, thank you.
We do have some before and after. Kev's done some really good job of putting together some of those G I story, um, little storybook.
Storyboards.
Storyboard, thank you.
Yeah, that'll be good. Well, that's ten years ago, but you know, there was some stuff that went.
Within a couple of years.
Yeah, but so that'll be good, because that'll be great, yeah.
Certainly can continue to do that work and uh you'll get an invitation in the cunning weeks or days for a, a combined PNRC tour of some of the projects and things that are going on.
Because I, I, I asked, I like going on those, Dan and I always go on uh and I, when I see there's a tour for parks, I say, we gotta go. And so the last one was just.
It was eye-opening and what park did we go to where it was, the building was?
Sue Fisher.
Past due for.
Sue Fisher Park.
Yeah, it was Lock Laban.
Well, no, Lock Laban was one before that and I think you went on that one. That was really bad. Oh, that was an embarrassment. But you and I went on the one where we went to Sue Fisher and the. Where, yeah, yeah, and then Woke, and then we went to Woke. Woke was bad.
We've done some major rehabs.
I know. You know, sometimes you go through that and I get embarrassed, especially with Lock Laban, that, that concession stand.
Yep.
Was awful.
It's nice now.
You know, this is Burnsville. We say that we're a vibrant community and we want people to, and when our assets look that bad, ah, and then, yeah.
You funded them and we've uh made some improvements and.
Yeah.
Yeah, and Woke, Woke looks much better now. Oh my god, yeah. Yeah, and we did not do Woke for what, thirty years?
Yeah, right, just minor things.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
When you have grandchildren, as I now do, you go to a lot of parks. Our parks are really nice, Cliff Van, the New West, I mean, the equipment and a lot of these that we've gone through and updated and replaced and renewed the buildings, that, that they're really, you can tell, we're taking care of them better today.
Much better. So, thank you. Our city is what it is because you guys take pride in your work. So thank you so much.
Thank you so much for coming on today.
Thank you.
Nice job.
Okay. The next item is the Heart of the City Operations and Maintenance uh Special Assessment Discussion. Okay, and uh, this is Jen. Jen is our city engineer. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. Um, so tonight I am gonna go over the Heart of the City Streetscape Assessment. And this is an update from your all-day work session. Where at that uh meeting, a couple of points were asked for staff to go back and, and um do some analysis. So, one thing we looked at was, and I'll present this in a, in a few minutes, uh, what would it look like to cap the Heart of the City Assessment at some percentage of the city property taxes? So we did look at that and I'll show you some, what we've uh found. And then, is it possible to expand the, the assessment area or where, which parcels we're assessing? So we, we have some information on that. And then at that uh work session, Ryan um brought up that we're planning an update to the Heart of the City Framework and we've ordered that project, we have a consultant on board. Um, and so that'll be actually at your next work session and, and introduction to that work. So, the streets policy has a, a few elements. The current policy has elements about cost recovery for the um operations and maintenance and then costs for installation of new elements. Just a little brief history, uh, the district, as you've already alluded, twenty years old, more than twenty years old, improvements were installed and we've been, for the past over twenty years, been assessing the adjacent properties in a consistent manner with the policy. So, there are two tiers of, of elements. And this chart um or table shows kind of the basic elements. For sidewalks and trails, tier one has sort of an upper-scale colored concrete uh and tier two is, is standard. Um, street lighting, tier one has more street lighting, more continued street lighting, um and tier two, it, that's further spaced apart. In both tiers, there's banners and snowflakes, um, but tier one is the only one that has the hanging baskets and flowers. And then in both tiers, there's boulevard and median mowing and irrigation. And in both tiers, there, there's a higher um response to snow removal. And this map shows the two tiers. So the purply color is the higher level um that I just described and the green color um is the, it's still high level, but it's, it's the reduced amenities. Um, the tan-colored parcels are parcels that are part of the assessment district. Just noting the city of Burnsville is part of that in the blue. So the current policy um is a fifty-fifty split with fifty percent city costs uh paid for and fifty percent assessed. And the assessments are based on a adjacent frontage or front footage basis, with the two tiers having different assessment rates based on their different costs to maintain. And assessments are levied on prior year's costs. So for this year, twenty twenty costs would be levied in twenty twenty-one and paid with the taxes in twenty twenty-two. The costs are approximately three hundred thousand each year. And that's um fifty percent is assessed, like I mentioned, but there are city parcels also and we're part of that assessment. So twelve percent of that fifty percent is city assessment. So it's really um sixty-two percent city um when, when it comes to that split. Two-thirds of the costs have to do with uh personnel. We have full-time uh personnel devoted to the area and then seasonals. And then there's more landscaping, irrigation supplies, things like that, vehicle repairs and, and outfit fitting, contract mowing. Uh, there are costs that are not charged to this district, so we have other staff members who work in and around the heart of the city. They're not charging their time to the assessment district. Uh, overtime for full-time employees is not included. And then when vehicle replacements are needed due to this district, we are not including that either. So twenty twenty costs were lower than in past. Um, we had to uh due to COVID, I believe, downsize a little bit, but we had contract mowing and that'll be for their twenty twenty-one assessment that we're talking about. So the first question that the council asked was more about what would it look like to cap the assess, special assessment based on the city of Burnsville tax uh portion? So we did two scenarios. We did a twenty-five percent cap and a fifty percent cap. With a twenty-five percent cap, it affects thirty-two parcels, which is eleven percent of the total number of parcels who are assessed. Um, there would be a need to find thirty-seven thousand dollars in revenue, that would be the, the difference between, with the cap, which is twenty-five percent of that total revenue. If with a fifty percent cap, twelve parcels are affected, that's four percent of the total. And there's a need to fill a twenty thousand dollar gap. The last two lines are the same no matter what, we have a question. There are three non-city tax-exempt parcels and so there, there's no way to cap or apply a cap to a non, um, to an exempt parcel. That makes up twenty thousand dollars. So we're assuming we just leave that as is, um, and that's thirteen and a half percent. And then we have our seven, this is just more of an FYI, our seven ta- uh city tax parcels, or si- tax-exempt parcels were contributing to the special assessment. So that's eighteen thousand um that I talked about before with which percentage it was. Uh, the assessment is in the policy fifty-fifty, we assess ourselves and so we're part of that.
Always been.
The next thought or, or idea raised at the um work session was, can we expand the district, include more parcels? And so this map is very complicated, lots of colors and hatching. I just want to walk through it really briefly. The staff has looked at what are some options or opportunities. Current, currently, um, the ones that have the sort of hatched marking are the ones that are in the existing assessment district. And that includes parcels that are outside of the Heart of the City proper, which is our TOD district. So the ones that are in the Heart of the City TOD district, those are in purple and yellow. Uh, purple being ones that have direct connections via sidewalk to the district amenities and the yellows kind of on the outskirts do not have direct connections. So, we're starting to look at, we were starting to look at, how do we break up the pieces, how do we decide? And what we have thought is, we are doing this framework update and there is a scope item to look at the special assessment. So before we got too far down any rabbit hole, um, we thought we would, you know, we looked at it, but we want to bring it to our consultant who's doing the whole framework plan and have them take a look at it and offer some recommendations.
Yes, uh, yeah, Dan, Kay.
One of my concerns on the timetable on this is, well, first of all, I brought it up to Melanie back in twenty nineteen, but then COVID hit and it, we just delayed and then it was all-day work session. So, it's coming up on, in my mind, twenty-four months or close to that since I first brought the issue up. And so my concern today is that we get through this process and make a decision before we set our September max tax, because that triggers the county to send out statements. And if there's going to be properties affected by any change that we may or may not make, they gotta be made before then. So my, when you, when you say we have this other process moving with a consultant and that's not gonna go till August, we're basically up against the wall and now. we're basically up against the wall, and now I feel like there's no chance that we can get this in for the next taxable year, and now it puts it off literally a whole nother year. And so, how are we going to be able to make this happen before this council, where we can make a decision before this council has to make a decision on the September max tax? So, this is either in or out depending the council's wishes.
So, I have the next slide, which is a request to hold off one more cycle. We did this when we were looking at the street improvement special assessments. We modified the policy. We kind of were getting some ideas, but we took actually two cycles to get it through. We don't want to make any rash decisions or push something through when we're doing this big-ish framework policy, and I, I can't speak to the earlier conversations that were had. At this point, we're thinking about the district really holistically and trying to think about ways to include new parcels and what the streetscape's gonna look like and include maybe some really different, potentially creative ways of assessing. So, we, that is our request, is that we keep with our current policy for our twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty costs, which bring you through, like you said, sort of a three-year, costs were done in twenty-twenty, process this year, payments next year. Have a revised policy ready for you for the next cycle.
Yeah, yeah.
Just want to emphasize, when it was brought up to move from front footage to per unit with the street assessments.
Right.
Yeah.
It took that amount of time to get through that. We, we heard about it, put it on all-day work session the one year, then took that year to do it, and it was the next year that it was implemented, because this, like Jen said, it is, there's just nothing simple about this. So, we're moving at the same pace, but it took quite a bit of effort just to get to this point with everything else that we're doing to get the data that we have. So, I would be, well, it'd be very difficult for us to do it at, at this time and still get through the process.
Well, for me, when I'm listening to all of this and we're enlarging the footprint of the assessed area, I want those people who are now going to be assessed for us to talk with them and to answer all their questions. Why now are they going to be assessed? And what does that mean for them? So, for me, to do this right, we need to make sure that we're talking to the people who were not assessed, but we're enlarging the footprint so that we can all bring that cost down a little bit, and it does take time. So, I do understand your frustration, Councilmember Kay.
I'll stop you right there. I'm not just a little frustrated. I feel like this got slow-played again, and I, and I think it's COVID, the majority of it, but I just think that this is, it, from my perspective, talking about this for the first time in twenty-nineteen, this is very frustrating. And so, to me, it comes down to two things. Put a cap in of twenty-five percent, for example, as you suggested, and include additional parcels. So, maybe we can't include the additional parcels, but we need the cap. We need to stop charging these parcels that are grossly overpaying and paying a huge percentage of their property tax bill. And I, it's going to be two years, and now it's going to be three years after I first brought it up. That's, that is not a good example of good government, even if you throw COVID delay in there. So, can we at least institute the cap so we stop overcharging these folks? And then, talk about expanding the pie to the additional, because I do get that that takes more time. I just think that, I can't go back to these same business owners and many of them and say, sorry, government's moving so slow. We're going to go into our third year just to stop overcharging you for your, your assessment. And that's kind of, I don't know what else to tell them.
Yeah. So, the other thing I want to understand, if we cap at twenty-five percent, is that an arbitrary amount? And what will that mean in terms of cost to the general fund?
So, the, the gap for the twenty-five percent cap is thirty-seven thousand.
Thirty-seven thousand.
So, the short answer would be, we'll have to find, we would have to, in that case, find funding for a thirty-seven thousand dollar.
Well, and.
Right, because for the next year, when the pie gets bigger, it could fill in that gap. We don't know what it is yet, but there's going to be some additional revenues taken in from the properties that are going to now be included. We don't know what that total, the impact, but.
We'll have to account for the.
But that was what we were looking at, is trying to offset what we're reducing with the cap is, include people who are truly getting some benefit. Maybe not the same as, I have the streetlights and I have the sidewalk and I have the plowing, but I'm across the street from the streetlights and the plowing and the sidewalks, and so, really, I'm getting quite a bit of benefit. So, that's, that's what we've asked you to do, is figure out a scale of, you know, a level one, two, three, which you, you sort of have a level one and two right now, right, and include these other affected properties, and let's, let's have that discussion. I was hoping we'd have it by now, but I, I get that, you know, Ryan, your, your point is very clear, and we certainly went through that whole change with the lot versus frontage, and it did take a while, and it does.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I totally respect, let's get all the stakeholders involved, but that's not an excuse to go back to the same people and go, sorry, you're going to overpay a third year in a row, after you brought it to my attention. I can't settle with that.
Are they overpaying?
Yeah.
Pardon?
Are they overpaying?
There, there's some, you remember the all-day work session when I brought all those examples up?
I remember the all-day work session. I'm just wondering, you keep saying they're all overpaying. How are they overpaying?
Two dozen examples of properties that were paying an exorbitant amount. One was paying almost equal a special assessment to their actual property tax bill, their base property tax bill. How can the special assessment, how can we say that's fair and equitable that your, your special assessment is equal to your base property tax bill, right? And many of them were thirty, forty, fifty, sixty percent of it and higher. So, I just want to at least bring them in line. So, if my base property tax bill is thirty-five hundred, my special assessment's not thirty-three hundred, right? Does, does that seem logical? And then, you have another property whose tax bill might be thirty-five hundred, and their property tax, their special assessment is seven hundred bucks. Why is one property so dramatically being charged a higher percent of their base property tax? Because what I look at is, what's that base property tax bill? It's based on the value of the property. And so, we're sticking this uneven special assessment that seems to have no relationship to the value of the property, and isn't that really the foundation of the assessment? Shouldn't the property value have some influence? That's really where I came up with the idea of just, let's just cap it at least, right? It, it's going to vary a little bit, but let's at least put a max on it so we don't have these wild swings of somebody paying three or four hundred and somebody paying the same thing they're paying for their base property tax bill.
Isn't that based on the size of their property though?
Uh, Ryan.
That's kind of what we're talking about doing, is coming back to a different type of system, but to get there in a shorter, in a more expeditious way, my suggestion was just to do a cap rather than.
I want to get there, Dan, but I want to do it right so that we're not having this discussion next year and going, okay, what are we cutting here?
So, Ryan, you, you had your hand up.
Yeah, it, it, it really isn't based upon the value. It's a linear improvement. So, we have a small building.
How we, how we did the parcels for the homes.
Yeah.
Until we changed it.
Until assessment, until we changed it, yes.
You've got more benefit by having an extremely long frontage with a small building on it. The property taxes, I'm not going to say they're low, but for the size of the parcel, they're not that high. And then, you compare that to the amount of mowing and lighting and all that stuff they get in front of their building. So, it really isn't based upon the, the value of the property. It's based upon the size of it, as you stated.
I mean, there's a property on the Parkway I know that has the property here, then it's got this long line that goes down to the bank practically, and it's like.
It's next to the one oh one building, those two, those two, those two buildings.
That's the poster child for why this came up, but that's only one example.
I know, that's the call I got.
Right. When I dug deeper, I found a lot of examples where it was like that, but not to that severity.
Uh, Ryan.
Councilmember Kay, I'm going to try not to frustrate you further, but I just want to.
It's too late.
I just want to make it clear that we didn't receive, you know, it was on the work session for this year, so.
Yeah, no, I.
We, we were not slow-playing.
Not your fault.
We were not slow-playing it. It, it, we got the official direction this year, and this is when we were able to, to get to this point. So, I just want to confirm that there was no, nothing behind how we were doing this, trying to.
Yeah. No, and I don't, and I don't believe that.
My frustration is not with you.
Yeah, and I don't believe that, Ryan. So, the thing that I look at is that we're going to enlarge this footprint. I want to make sure those people are talked with and, and their questions answered, and they are all part of the decision-making process. And then, if we're going to, if, to your point, Dan, that you want to cap it this year, for me, I, I want to look at, so thirty-seven thousand, and then what happens? I want the numbers to be run. If we did enlarge the footprint, what would that be? And are we doing linear foot, or are we doing per unit? Yes, Jen?
So, I think all of those questions will come out of a broader study where it couldn't be really per unit because of commercial properties, but there could be some innovative ways that we haven't thought of in the past. That's what we're trying to get a consultant to think differently, think about it differently, and come up with a strategy. We couldn't give you numbers today about what would expanding the, the footprint be, because we don't know how we would assess those other streets.
Yeah.
But I think we have found that legally we can. It's, it's an option that we can entertain. The framework does have a lot of public engagement, and so, we'll be, that's one of the key reasons that we were trying to tie them together. As we're talking about updating the framework, we're reaching the same people who are going to be assessed for the streetscape. So, that's why we're trying to tie them together as, as one thing, but really, the idea was, we don't want to close any doors in the short term. We want, we wanted to think more big picture.
Yeah. Kara.
So, how long do you see this process taking?
The framework is, the schedule is to have it completed by March of twenty-twenty-two, so in time to update a policy in the spring for the, for the next year, yeah.
So, if we did a cap for this year, that buys us time to come up with a more thoughtful method by next year?
Yeah, we just have to address the thirty-seven thousand gap. That's the only thing I think that is, we need to figure out. If that's the cap, or the twenty thousand, if we went with the fifty percent cap.
Yeah, and, but the thing I want to make sure that we look at is that, are we going to do per linear footage or unit or something else? And you all are going to do that, that, that process where we can come up with a innovative way of doing it. So, I just want, Dan, for these businesses to know, if we're capping them this year, it might not be what it is the following year. You know, I don't want people to be confused.
Well, we may end up keeping that cap in permanently, so we don't know that.
Well, that's the reason. I don't know, because I don't, we don't have, and I want to understand what staff is going to bring, bring forward. What, what other innovative methodology will they bring to us? The other is that, you know, what does a per-unit difference is in terms of cost? If we're going to just, instead of the linear footage, you know, what does that mean? How, and then, what is the, the true impact to the general fund? And, and, and to Ryan's budget, because it comes out of Public Works.
I, I think a cap would buy us time to do this more thoughtfully. If we do the cap, we're not in a rush. There's not a big time pressure to complete this. We can do this more thoroughly. And then, it's not just like, come on, come on, come on, come on. So, and then, there's, you know, proper time for, for engagement, you know, all of, all of those types of things. Because, you know, and, and I do remember at the all-day work session, the examples that, that we went through, and if I was a property owner, I would be very, very unhappy. And no, it's not, not, not saying it's staff's fault, but I am saying that this has been a slow process just to bring this forward. So, I think a little temporary relief while we continue our, you know, our deliberative process is in order. So, I, I would be very supportive of a cap. And then, continue to look at this situation and go forward. And I don't think that that's confusing to people. You know, especially when we're engaging them to tell them, we're looking at different methods of this. We're not sure which way we're going to go, and we want you to weigh in as well. But in the meantime, we're gonna cut out the topmost outliers of who's paying, you know, large amounts. So, I, I would be, be very supportive of, of that whole process.
So, on the larger taxpayers down there for that, for the assessments, how would that affect their tax? Do you know? Have you looked at that at all? Where you look at a big parcel, and if we're cap at twenty-five percent, then their tax will go from X to Z? I mean, are we saving them?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have that.
What is that?
Well, the total is going to be thirty-seven for all of it. I don't.
Saying some of our bigger parcels where they're, Dan's saying they're outlandishly taxed. I'd like to know how that changes for them.
We do have a spreadsheet that shows the.
I'd like, I'd like to actually see that. So, so what I'm hearing is, you want to cap this at twenty-five percent. You want the rest of the city to pick up the other thirty-seven thousand dollars to pay for while we study this thing.
Well, and the city's already paying sixty-two percent.
They're already paying sixty-some percent. They're, so that's going to up the price for the entire city to pay more, is what you're telling us right now.
Maybe we should have been quicker then.
And what I, what I want to know is, do we still value what we're doing down there?
Yeah, I don't think anyone has said that.
You want to change, you want to change any of what we're doing down there? Because that cost isn't going to change if we, if we value what's going on.
Well, and the thing is, if we say we want a vibrant city, and then we back away from that, then it isn't.
I'm just trying to get where this is.
Yeah, you're asking a question of whether there's, the, the service provided is still desired, right?
Yeah.
Does this council think there's a value in it?
I think that is going to come out of the deeper dive.
The deeper dive that staff needs to do.
Yeah. We should probably ask them too, yeah.
And the.
Mayor's right, yeah.
And you have to have, and you have to have the conversation with all of those folks, because around there, and when you get into Gateway, because it's also, I have walked all, you know, you have churches there, but, but the, but the property belongs to Kraus Anderson. So, Kraus will be the one that's going to be divvying up the cost to all of the tenants in that area, just like in my building. And, you know, the, the cost is all divvied up between all of us that are property owners in my condominium. So, that's what's going to happen to all of those big parcels. It, yeah, it's.
The framework, framework plan is, update's going to be all about how to make it as vibrant as possible.
Yeah.
We're definitely not looking at trying to find ways to do less than that.
Yeah, and that's what I want to see, is, is the deep dive you all are going to do, and because I trust that you will come up with innovative solutions. You have in the past. Look at what we just learned with the, with the natural resources. Look what we did with the, with the water quality of the lake. Look at what's been going on with the sustainability plan and all of the, so, the things that we do and we focus on and we have a good plan, we get great results. So, and you all do such great work, and I'm very deeply grateful for that and appreciative of the work that you do. So, there is a deep dive that needs to be done, but the other end that I, I want those people engaged, just like we've done with everything else. I mean, that water quality, all of those people who live by lake, all of the bodies of water, they're the ones who came in and said, yeah, we want you to allocate fifteen thousand dollars for this many years to clean up the water. Fifty million, fifteen million, I'm sorry, fifteen million dollars. And, and we did, and look at the, the results that came out of it. So, I do want people engaged in this thing. They need to know, and we're enlarging the footprint.
Yeah, absolutely. I, I don't think there's any disagreement on that.
Yeah.
So, a lot of the discussion's already happening. But really, we, we wanted to know about this thought about keeping the current policy for twenty-twenty. I think we need a confirmed direction on that. The capping of the streetscape assessment, how to handle non-taxable properties. We don't really have a mechanism to reduce theirs if they seem like they're, there's no barometer there, because there's no tax. And then.
Imagining Diamond Head, sorry to interrupt, but like Diamond Head is paying six thousand dollars that the building that you're discussing is paying. They don't have a way to reduce down, you know, because they're not comparing it to a property tax.
Yeah, and the school district, all the government units are paying this one. You know, it's not like property tax, that they're not paying property tax, but they're paying.
Calculate what they, like theoretically, what they would pay in property tax, and then you can.
We're on the tax.
Put a cap on that.
You could do that, you're right.
So, because the other thing that I'm looking at is that all of those. So because the other thing that I'm looking at is that all of those co-ops, they're 501(c)(3)'s. Are they 501(c)(3)'s, those co-ops?
The Burnsville co-op?
Yeah.
Parkway co-op?
Yeah, and, and, and the real life and all of those.
I don't know.
So I don't know, do they pay?
The Parkway co-op is not included, the.
I know it. It is because it's on the other side.
Well, it's, they're.
Apartments on the other side aren't included.
Pardon?
All those apartments on the other side aren't included, are they?
No.
I didn't think so.
On the south side.
Because we didn't put the lights on that side.
Yeah.
If they're residential prior to the district being put in place, they were not part of the special assessment program. So that will be part of the things we'll be looking at should they be for a potential expansion.
Well, and that's the thing, you know, there's so much here that needs to be talked about. And those people need to have a voice in this conversation.
I don't think anybody's disagreeing with that.
Yeah, no, but the thing is, how do we get there with trying to understand what we do this year? Do you want the cap this year?
I think that's what we just stated. Put the cap in at twenty five percent this year and let the rest of the process play out. I don't know why we're circling around this bush more and more and more. I think we've already made that.
I just want to make sure that, you know, it's not an arbitrary figure, but the other is that what happens when you come back? Then we go to them and we say, oh, the cap is going to be different.
They're going to be involved in the process.
Well, yeah.
So they're going to be just as involved, if not more throughout this process. So I don't think there's going to be any surprise.
So you're, you're willing to put the cap in this year at twenty five percent?
I think if, if we've been telling them for the last three years that we'll find a solution to kick at another one, I don't think it would hurt. And then come back to the drawing board once this is done. I mean, I'm open to it. And as long as it's understood that it might not be what this is, but I.
Well, that, that's the question that I have. As long as people understand that it might not be.
I guess it'll be on our staff on the communication on how we would convey that. I mean, we're not talking about hundreds of thousands of properties.
And probably we could put in the mailing information about the heart of the city frameworks update and ways to participate when we're mailing out the notice.
I think that's, if I may, I think the first one in August is when the assessment process starts. So that's when you have to start the process. So what we could do is we could work with finance to find options for the thirty seven thousand. You know, what, what would be the methodology to make that up? And then we can include that with the background.
So.
To Ryan's point, I think I'm hearing direction from the council that we want to move forward with a cap for this year. We'll work with finance to bring that back as part of the, as part of the budget conversation. And then we'll continue, council member workman to the council's point.
And the cap you're referring to is twenty five because you had two options there.
You have two options.
Twenty five percent cap.
You're going with, yeah. So, yeah, I just. Okay.
I didn't think this was going to be a provocative subject tonight.
Oh.
Just added thirty seven thousand dollars to the general fund budget.
So Greg and staff, what I'm hearing from the majority of the council is that we put this year to go with the twenty five percent cap for the heart of the city assessments. Only the ones who are being assessed now because we haven't delved into a, a larger footprint.
With that thirty seven thousand dollar impact.
And that you're going to have to come back and find a way, yeah. Brian's thinking, I have thirty seven thousand out of my budget.
It's good Carissa's here tonight as well. We'll make sure that the communication to, to the property taxpayers are, are clear and, and continue that engagement process as we work through the, the rest of the project.
I, I personally, and I, and obviously this is getting to be an old subject to be discussed over a couple of years. But, you know, Dan, I understand we're putting thirty seven back into that very large number. But it's the right thing to do to give, to, or to, to at least get a lot closer to a fair and equitable system of this particular special assessment. It's just very, very wildly disparate by property and it makes no sense. We don't, I don't know that we have another one that's that dramatically different between the lows and the highs. It's just all over the place and then when you look at the value of what they're getting, they're all benefiting from it. Yet some are paying five times as much as others.
We were already on the path for the right thing to do by expanding the, the base itself.
The footprint. So the thing is, our staff is coming up with a solution.
You're just willing to pay thirty seven thousand dollars to expedite, that's all.
Well, thirty seven is.
We are already on the right path.
Exactly, we, we.
So don't, don't say right path to me because we're already on that path.
Well, we were, the path started with the discussion with our city manager in 2019. Okay? So you understand how long I've been traveling on that path. So it's a little frustrating for me. And, and this was discussed at the all day work session and the timeline was, 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 is what it is, right? So here we sit, middle of July, having this discussion. And this is the only option we have to provide some relief for these property owners.
So let's, let's be kind and, and be cognizant of the things that we say. Because 2019 was one year and that was followed by COVID and so many things. And this is not to make excuses, but this is to understand the process that we've been on. And that it wasn't, I don't believe was, you know, like Brian says, it's not something that they consciously did to slow the process. The thing is, it's how, what happened last year and what we were all, all involved in, what the experience was for all of us. So for me, when we look at thirty seven thousand, that's added on to the other sixty two percent that the rest of the community is paying. So I'd like to see what the spreadsheets would look like and what innovations will come out of it. And, but what I'm hearing is that, you know, put a cap of twenty five percent.
All right, and then we'll be back next month to do sort of a kickoff of the heart of the city frameworks plan. We won't be getting into the details of the special assessment. We're just going to give a high level overview of what we're proposing to do.
Yeah, because I think it's very important that you, you proceed with your process. It's very important to me because you do good work when you do that and you come up with innovative solutions and the collaborations that you will go through. So I'm deeply grateful for all of that. And so I think that's where we're at with that tonight.
All right, thank you.
But thank you, Jen, and thank you, staff, for all the good work. So we are going to take a short break because the next item is going to be very comprehensive. So five minutes, Carissa?
That sounds great.
And, and Amber? Okay.
It'll also be efficient, we promise.
Yes, well, but when I looked, when I looked at all of the stuff, I'm thinking, okay, there's going to be a lot of discussion also. So we'll take a five minute break and then we'll reconvene. We are now reconvened and the next item on our agenda is the 2021 residential and business survey results presentation. And our communications director, Carissa Larson, and our community engagement manager is Amber Jacobson. And they are going to be reporting on, on this. So welcome, ladies.
Thank you, meta mayor, members of the council. So my name is Carissa Larson. I am the communications and community engagement director. And we're here to provide you with some numbers tonight on the results of the community survey that we do every four years. So every four years, we conduct a statistically valid survey of both residents and businesses just to try to kind of gauge community voice, find out what their opinions are on a variety of city services. Like I said, this usually takes place every four years. So it usually takes place kind of along the election cycle. This year we were, so we were supposed to do it in 2020. We decided to postpone it by a couple of months for a couple of reasons. Mostly due to survey fatigue. People were receiving a lot of surveys about COVID and about the general election. And we thought maybe we would get a better response if we postponed it even just by a couple of months. So we started this process in January.
Carissa, do you want to introduce our consultant?
I absolutely will. I absolutely will. Yep. And we had surveys in the field throughout the spring. I'm going to let Amber talk a little bit about our goals going into this process. And then, yes, I will introduce our, our consultant and he will run through all of the things that you're actually interested in, which are the results of the survey.
Thank you, Carissa. Meta mayor, members of the council. Again, my name is Amber Jacobson. I'm the experience and engagement manager. And our, our goals of the survey really were to learn what's important to the community, to find out what the community values. And we plan to use this information to inform staff work, find out what we're doing well and what do we need to improve on. We saw this as an engagement effort and not only how to best engage the community to complete the survey, but also how to use the results to better serve the community moving forward. And it's just one more tool in our toolbox. We also chose to reimagine the survey questions rather than do the same questions that we've always used in order to ensure that we're keeping up with, with the times and what we're trying to do moving forward and asking questions that are relevant to us and to the community.
So with us tonight is William Saint Demour from Cobalt Community Research. He is the executive director there and helped us work through some of the questions, how we could word them properly to make sure that we were, you know, weren't leading answers or anything like that. And he also helped us come up with questions that were Burnsville specific, but they could also be benchmarked against some regional and national data, just, you know, kind of see where we compare. He'll, he'll go into the results, but just as a kind of frame of reference, we, we chose to do a mail survey this year. That was a little different than we have in previous years. Previous years, we've done phone. It's getting harder to get people on the phone with cell phones and all of that, right? So we went to a mailed survey this year. We sent out a random sampling of two thousand surveys to residents and eighteen hundred surveys to businesses. There was also an online version that anyone in the community could take. It's not part of the statistical analysis that you'll hear tonight, but William has provided that data for us so that we've just, you know, we were able to gauge kind of all voices, have everybody heard, even if, even if there was kind of this random sampling of mailed surveys. So I'll turn it over to William to give the results and as he's starting, in case your eyes are like mine and you don't like staring at a screen, I'll hand you, hand you the presentation that he's about to give. William, can you hear us?
Yeah, welcome, William. Welcome.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to present to you. So you've got a wonderful community. So they're very engaged. It has really been a pleasure to work on this project. Your staff have been fantastic. So I haven't had a chance to work with your goldfish, but I, I'm looking forward to that. I don't know why. Okay, so I believe Carissa is going to be driving for me. So if you go to the next slide. My research matters. Certainly this is something that the community is already used to doing. It's something that's important. I'm not going to read all of these bullets for you, but there's a couple of things that I just want to highlight, particularly for those who might be watching the council meeting in their homes. A couple of the key ones, it's just balancing the demands of various groups that might be vocal, but they don't necessarily reflect the of the majority of residents. Making sure that you understand part of the context of that as you're going through the various decisions that you're making, looking at budget, trying to allocate those dollars in a way that will optimize the experience for the community. And then ultimately, you know, as you know, this is a great opportunity to build trust for the inclusion, for the transparency, all of those kinds of things that are just so important right now. Next slide, please. Study goals. Staff went over that. Study goals. Staff went over that just a moment ago, so I'll just go ahead and jump to the next one. So the voice of residents, just to share, you know, a little bit of a flavor of some of the comments that we heard back from residents to give you just a good feel for it. I'm not going to read these for you so you can take a look at them. The general sense that we have is that people really enjoy the value of the things that are going on. Are you perfect? No, there's certainly things that we've worked on to improve. But I think people do see the efforts. They're engaged with the vision that you've formed out and just things that you're doing are really resonating with residents. Next slide, please. Sampling methodology, talked about that a little bit just a few minutes ago. So we had the sample itself. We heard back from 365 residents as part of the random sample. Let's call it minus 5.1. We also heard back from 175 non-sample people. Again, that's just to allow folks to want to share their opinions to be heard. One of the tools that we have that's part of the analysis set that we have are cross tabs. And within the cross tabs, we basically take every question and break it apart by every demographic group. And in that, we have a line that gives you the response for those folks who are not part of the sample. So you can see what their thoughts were as you go through the information as well. Next slide, please. Just to get to the bottom line, I expect you're not flipping to the end of the presentation because I know that's always a tempting thing to do. First of all, you did really well compared to the benchmarks. So you were at or above most of the national and regional benchmarks for your residential survey. There are five areas that were particularly closely associated with overall satisfaction with overall outcomes that are tied in with that in the model that we use. Those outcomes are people remaining in the community, recommending to others, encouraging people to move in the community, volunteering, encouraging businesses to start up in the community, all of those kinds of things, along with kind of the brand image that the community has as well. Those things are locally managed. So the job that your staff are doing, that city leadership is doing, is coming through. People are noticing that that is an important factor as they look at, you know, their satisfaction and their experience in the community. Taxes, parks and recreation, sustainability. And as I mentioned before, Burnsville vision is something that really did resonate with folks. So we'll go into that in a little bit more detail. There were a lot of comments and a lot of things that we saw that your investment in having skilled staff to execute programs has paid off. Folks really appreciate the professionalism and all of those things that go along with it, due to responsiveness and so on. It's something to stay on that path because continuing to deliver value and when you get to the taxes and that kind of thing as well, you'll see that really you're in a pretty optimum spot at the moment. Themes in terms of what people like best, you know, if they love the parks, they love the location. They're in such a great spot, they can really get to lots of places pretty quickly. All right, next slide, please. We have a lot of detail that we can share with you. And what I'm going through today is just the very top of the iceberg. There are, I think the term was gazillions of pages that we can share with you. The staff have that. They're going through it. It includes things like all of the verbatim comments and just pages and pages of cross tabs, which for me are really the heart of the research when you start looking at it and trying to act on what this research is doing to help it get traction in the community. This is just a tiny little sliver of what that looks like, but I just wanted to explain what it looks like so you know how to use it and as you go into the budget process and also strategic planning, so you can take that into account. So essentially, every question in the survey is its own row, so our own column. So you can see a couple of the categories there for utility services and for law enforcement. Then you see the individual questions within each of those areas. And then what we have is the overall score at the top, which is weighted by the city to make sure that we are reflecting the population overall. We have, and then in this case, it's just residency and if people want to rent their residence. But there's a number of things that we dive into as far as breaking that apart. But what you want to look for is the shade, the blue and red shade, because it's going to tell you if it's consistently blue or consistently red all the way down the column, that means that regardless of demographic group, people are having a very consistent experience from the city and have very consistent perception. If you give a little bit more check ring, then that tells you that there might be differences. So if it's a particular area that you want to dive into more deeply, like utilities or law enforcement, parks or any of the other things that are in there, this is a useful guide as you're out there buying groceries or just having conversations with folks on the street. Instead of just generally asking, you know, how are things going? This helps you really drill down into a specific question. If it's a park and someone with young children, you want to dive into something for that particular cohort, you can ask them specifically, how can we improve this area for people like you? And it gives you a much more precise, actionable kind of response than just a general how it's going. Next slide, please. We have a number of open ended questions that we talked through as part of the survey. And what we did is we took those comments and put it in software that's actually created this word cloud. And the things that came up most often are the larger words. And then we took those big words and we looked at what are the themes around them? So you can see parks. So generally, there are a lot of comments about people really loving the parks and enjoying them, the recreation, the trails, all of those kinds of opportunities are deeply appreciated. Next location, again, it's that access that they're able to get to Minneapolis-St. Paul. They're able to have all of the benefits of living in a larger community while living in your smaller community with the more cost effectiveness and more community feel. And they can be, same sort of thing, they're able to get to the zoo, the airport, all of those kinds of things. Next slide. Some opportunities of what can be strengthened, what can be improved over time. The things that came up most often was school districts. And that's something that you control directly, but may have some influence on that. Certainly a piece that is influencing people's decision to move, to remain, to recommend, those kinds of things. Water, there were a number of comments regarding water quality, particularly the drinking water quality. And then roads, you know, road improvements, anywhere in the upper Midwest is going to be something that's often high on the list. Next slide, please. So this particular slide at a higher level is just designed to give you some additional context in terms of how are you performing compared to the rest of the world? So your scores are over on the far right-hand side. You can see the 2021 Burnsville. Your overall business, Burnsville management score is a 73. This is on a scale of zero to 100. And 73 is a really, really good score. So no one ever gets 100. It's not a grading scale of an A, B, C. So 73 is solid. It'll give you a sense of what that looks like. You can go over the row. And you can see at the national level, how well do people mark this in the same time period for the national, similar sized communities, national Midwest, and similar sized communities in the Midwest. So essentially, when it comes to local government management and how your residents perceive you, you are significantly above the performance of your peer group. Residential satisfaction. So this is the ACSI, the American Customer Satisfaction Index out of the University of Michigan Ross Business School. This is one of the things that they report on a regular basis as part of their economic metrics. And your score is 69. And you can see how that compares to those other scores as well. Again, well above, just a little bit above the Midwest score, but very, very solid. Then school satisfaction, you can see that you're at 62, which is a little bit, you know, it's at or lagging some of those other benchmarks. So that is an area that can be improved in the community. To give you some additional context, you can see the county scores, the state scores, the national score overall, which includes private sector and federal agencies. The reason I dropped in the national score with the private sector is because often we hear the argument that a city should be run just like businesses. And to some extent, that's true. But cities are a very different animal than businesses. You're always going to see, almost always going to see that the private scores outperform the public scores because businesses have a much smaller set of products and services that they provide to a much more limited market. And cities provide a huge number of services to a very broad market. And so just that very nature does change how that mechanism works. Next slide, please. So looking at the overall experiences, so see, these are kind of the big categories within the survey. And just how to read this, you can see the first line, that dark green one, that's the national score. The light green one, this is looking at national for similar sized communities. And then same with the Midwest with the red being overall Midwest, the pinkish being the Midwest similar size. And your score is the blue one. And you can see often you are at or above the benchmarks in most areas. There's a couple of areas that you aren't, but overall, you're doing really well. And these little green marks, I just put them out here to bring your eye to, these are three areas that look particularly strong in terms of their association with overall satisfaction. So those are the overall parks and recreational programs that you have, overall city management, your overall taxes. And you can see all of those are above the benchmarks. Next slide, please. And I apologize for a couple of these slides. There's a lot of information that we're packing into them, but you'll have the opportunity to kind of think about these and chew on them over time. But looking at images, this is really your brand, similar sort of story. So we've got the same set of benchmarks. You can see in general, you are at or above the benchmarks. You're doing really well as far as a place that is inclusive and celebrates diversity. You're doing really well at a safe place to bike and walk. You're doing really well at an enjoyable place for older adults, a great place for children. All of these things are really good. A little bit softer on the safe place to live and the safe place to bike and walk at night. So those are things that you might want to be aware of and work on. So one of the techniques that we do is we look again at that strength and association between each of the questions and your overall satisfaction, those outcome behaviors that are tied in with them. And essentially, you're going to have a chart that shows, it's a scatter chart, kind of, it takes a second to read. So I wanted to explain how it works before I go there. Essentially, you're going to have your services plotted out. So the scale on a basically one to 100, that's going to be your performance, is going to be the vertical placement. And things that are in the top are going to be your relative strengths and things in the bottom are your relative weaknesses. And then the location from right to left is going to do you with the strength of the relationship with overall satisfaction. So things that are further to the right are much more tightly associated with overall satisfaction and are meeting in the community, those kinds of things. Things that are on the left-hand side are more weakly connected. And you could kind of consider those to be more optimized, things that you don't have to move very much in order to drive satisfaction further. So let's go to the next slide. We'll start getting into some of the data. This is showing you how the main categories of the question were scored out. So things again, over on the right-hand side are the things that are the most closely associated with overall satisfaction and so on. And these include 62, which is the local government management, the overall management. 89, which is the overall vision. If you recall, I mentioned that it really resonated well with residents. This is what tells me that, that is really strongly correlated with that. Number 29, which is overall taxes. And while it's just a smidge below the line, this is actually a really good score because most of the communities that we deal with, it's down, floating down here somewhere in the bottom area around number seven. Number 71 is the overall parks. This is really a strategic strength. It's closely tied in with overall satisfaction. And you're just, you know, you're doing a really good job. And then 76, which is, or 78, which is the overall sustainability. So closely related, again, an area that you're doing really well. And that's driving you forward, forward. Number seven, you can see that floating down there at the bottom. That has to do with overall public schools. As I mentioned, that's not something you control, but that is something that's eroding the satisfaction in the community. And then the things that are all over on the left-hand side are things that are more optimized. Those aren't things necessarily that you need to work on in order to optimize satisfaction. Now, there might be other reasons that you want to optimize them in terms of safety and standards, those kinds of things, but not from the standard of satisfaction. One thing I do want to point out, this is often a question, is you can see in the upper left-hand corner, you can see overall fire services floating up there. People say, you know, I know fire departments are really important. Why is it way over on the left-hand side? And the reason why is that it's not measuring importance in this particular graph. If you think about buying a car, the things that you might consider that help you decide to buy one brand over another brand might be the price, or it might be styling, or it might be gas mileage. Those are the kind of things that would show up over here on the right side of the chart. It's not whether or not the car has a steering wheel. And that's really what this is telling you, things that are over there on the left-hand side. They're not things that are going to differentiate your community from other communities, but they're still really important to have. So hopefully, that's helpful as you look at some of these graphs. Next graph, please. This is looking at the overall vision. You don't see all of the comparison with benchmarks because these are custom questions that are unique to you. Again, this is a baseline. So as you measure this in future years, you'll be able to see how you've improved on executing your vision. So again, doing really well, particularly when we look at delivering high-quality public services with respect for the resources and then committed to environmental stewardship, both being particularly strong in your case. Next slide, please. Diving into city management, you can see the overall on the far left-hand side. Again, you've got this pattern of your score being well above the benchmarks. So again, showing that staff are doing a great job, the investment that you've made is certainly being experienced by your residents. Things that were particularly strong, follow provided by staff over here on the far left-hand or right-hand side. The following provided by staff, the ease of getting questions answered, and fair and respectful interaction with residents. So those are all really fantastic scores. A bit lower with spending dollars wisely, still well above the benchmarks. And our experience with that is that cities often don't do, there's two issues. It's challenging to tell a story about budget setting that's going to engage people because a lot of people aren't very interested in that. And so as a consequence, you don't really tell that story very much because there's lots of other things that are exciting that do engage folks. So I think you've got a little bit of that dynamic going here in terms of how do you tell the story in a way that resonates with folks that they're going to be interested in and that they're going to pay attention to it. It's not that you're making terrible spending decisions. It's often because, you know, people aren't really paying attention to those spending decision kind of stories that you're putting out there. Next slide, please. Taxes. Nobody likes taxes ever with any of the folks that we work with, but you're doing pretty well. You can see the overall taxes, you're above the benchmarks. When we look at the individual areas as far as the fairness of appraisals, you can see you're above the benchmark. You're about even in terms of the amount of time that you provide to pay the taxes. Fairness of tax levels, so dealing with the overall tax burden, you can see that you're well above the benchmarks. And when we look at the amount and quality of services they receive from the local taxes you pay, you can see that's doing really well too. So that's dealing with that value proposition. So while nobody likes paying taxes, they feel like they're getting a pretty good mix of stuff from the city for the dollars that they're paying. So again, very encouraging sign if you go through. Next slide, please. Law enforcement. This wasn't one of the drivers in the survey, but I wanted to put it on just because of some of the broader national things that are happening. Just really to point out that your police, the police department is doing a really good job. So again, they're above the benchmarks, everything from response time to engagement to equitable and respectful treatment. They're doing a great job. Next slide, please. Parks and recreation, this is one of the drivers. So, and again, you're doing really well. Not much I can add here other than keep it up. This is an area that your investment is paying off. It's highly leveraged for driving satisfaction, so you want to keep building out that strength. Next slide is just giving you a sense of the scores for folks based on how often they use the parks and recreation. And you can see the green is the overall score. And then the short little line there, that's a little bit of a paler color, those are folks who have never used the service, never used the parks, never used recreation. And then fewer than six times a year, six to 12 times a year, then you're having, there's more than 12 times a year. And essentially, the relationship I wanted to point out is that you're heavy users. The more they use them, the happier they are. The only exception to that is a little bit on the variety of recreational programs. You can see that the heavy users are a little less satisfied. And I suspect that has to do with COVID and that they really value their time with the program that you offered and have to come back because of the pandemic. Next slide, please. So going into the budget re-planning, a few slides just to help introduce that. What we did is a similar kind of grid. So on the vertical, you have your performance again. And on the horizontal, you have the percentage of folks that selected that particular service or program as being a budget priority. So here, over on the far right-hand side, way up in the corner, this is where you see police and fire really being important to folks. So this is showing importance. And again, these are programs that people want, they want that steering wheel to work in whatever car they buy. And then you can see the other things that are a much lower level of priority. Next slide. Looking at parks and recreation, different aspects of that. Over on the right-hand side, you see city parks overall, trails and pathways really being the thing that is the most important to folks. And that's, that really corresponds with the other community, the people that you could do it. Next slide. Looking at other city services, selection voting process is a big one, stormwater management, flooding prevention. But all of these are really a little bit of a lower priority, the two slides that I shared just a moment ago. So that's going through kind of very high summary for your residential scores and what your resident's experience and wanting to share with you. So now we'll kind of dive in over to the business side and go through that a little bit more. So, um, businesses really like the location of residents. They like feeling involved with the community and they like the affordability, especially compared to other communities that we could do yet. Um when we look at the benchmarking, uh your benchmarking isn't so far above the benchmarks that we saw with residential, it's much more to do with the benchmarks. Um and it's a little bit below some of the private sector folks that we looked at. The things that are most closely linked with satisfaction and engagement, again, local government management. So that experience with staff, that experience with policymakers, all of those things uh continue to resonate. The branch of your vision again resonates uh with this particular group as well. Regulatory environment, collaborative environment, place and location. And uh one quick note, it's just because these are things that are closely linked doesn't mean that they aren't necessarily good or bad. Again, it's just telling you how closely each of these areas are associated with overall satisfaction, likelihood to remain in the community, some of those kinds of things. Um operations or opportunities uh for improvement, things that you can think about going forward. What is enhanced collaboration with business, that certainly is a thing that I heard earlier in the meeting tonight. And those are things that resonate well with the business community, they wanna be engaged. They would like more information about grant and loan information, not grants and loans provided by the city. But there's so much going on right now from the feds and from the state, it's hard for business owners to run their business and try to get it up again and keep track of all of these other things. So that's one thing that they would be particularly interested in getting more information about. Uh they'd like to partner with the city on cross-promotion kind of things, and they would like more workshops with some fire. Business methodology, we talked about it a little bit with the residential side, similar kind of approach for the business. Uh we had a response from a hundred and seven folks, I think there were another handful that responded voluntarily. Uh one of the things that we experienced was that there was a fairly high number of surveys that will return because the, basically the business was closed temporarily or permanently. Um so there was quite a pile of things that came back, so that was one piece of why it is a little bit lower number than what we normally expect. But it still gives you a pushing minus six point one percent margin of error, which again is pretty solid for most of the things that you're looking at. Next slide, please. As with the residential, I wanted to give you a little bit of a feel for some of the comments that were shared from your business community. And pretty positive, they, they like the location, uh the accessibility, the affordability, the experience with staff. All of those things kind of tie in to what they're sharing with you. Running some context, so you can see your scores here are uh in the, the sixties and seventies. So overall ACSI, so overall customer satisfaction of your business community is sixty-seven. So a little bit softer than what your residential score is, but not a lot. And you can see down here, some of the comparison groups in terms of federal agencies, US Postal Service, the IRS, um credit unions, which aren't public, but just to give you a sense for other kinds of organizations that people interact with. So when they compare the service levels that they're receiving from the city with other organizations they work with, it just gives you some of that additional feel. Utilities, hospitals, and then again, that national ACSI score. Let's go to the next one, so we talked about how these graphs work. So things over on the far right-hand side are the drivers. What we see here is number sixty, which again is city uh management. So again, that experience they had working with city does resonate with your business community, and it is a strength. Number seventy-six, which is the overall vision, so not only does it resonate with residential uh cohort, but also with your business. Keep it up, this is something that's, that's really driving the needle. Sixty-eight, which is the overall regulatory environment, you can see that's not really, uh it's not a strength, it's not a weakness, it's right on the line. So it's something that is, is pretty good, there's a few minor tweaks in here that we'll see. Uh but overall, keep moving in the direction that you're moving. Then thirty-four down here is the overall collaborative environment, there, there's a number of things you can work on. Again, to build that relationship, to build the trust, and to build the communication. Next slide, please. What are the three things that you do well, work out again? So location, you know, people really like the ability to access the, the greater Minneapolis area. Uh they like the programs and the events that are going on, communities feel, the businesses feel involved, they can be a part of it. So that's certainly something to keep doing and do more of. And they like the affordability, so uh they can access, you know, that whole metropolitan area without breaking the bank. Had potential improvements to consider, number one thing that came up was roads. So road improvements, uh overall, you know, making the place feel better maintained, aside from the hot holes and the damage to vehicles. Police, uh just making sure that, that the area is crime-free and safe, as perceived, as crime-free and safe as possible. And taxes, you know, they don't wanna pay taxes if they don't have to, but continue to focus on making sure you're giving the value for the taxes paid. That, you know, the services continue to be visible, uh that they're aware of it, that the communication is good. And I think you're gonna be a, a pretty dialed in person. Next slide, looking at the vision. So pretty solid scores uh with your business community, particularly ensuring community safety, so we see the efforts. Uh they want to see that continued commitment to environmental stewardship and delivering high-quality public services with respect for resources. Next slide, city management, again, very solid scores. So uh similar kind of experience, the level of knowledge, uh the uh being well-managed, having leaders who are trustworthy. These are all very solid scores, a very solid place to build from. Next slide is the collaborative environment, the score, I said that the scores were a bit softer, and so there's some opportunities here for you to, to bump this up as you go through your planning process. Uh but they have good solid scores for the involvement of the chamber of commerce, uh cities welcoming attitude toward businesses. But you can see that there's a few things that are a little bit lower that, that you can focus on. So looking at the uh potential marketing support for businesses in terms of sharing information and, and other kinds of things. Some kind of cross-promotion kind of things that we talked about earlier. Police for speech and city planning, they, they do wanna be involved in decisions, they do wanna share their insights, and that involvement with the school system as well. Next slide, please. Regulatory environment. Overall, pretty good, you can see that the ease in process of uh any local licenses, uh the ease of process to comply with uh required permits, and the ease of processes to comply with current inspections, all are pretty straightforward. Um it's A little bit softer with the uh value of services that you receive uh for the local tax that you pay. But again, we saw earlier, things are pretty balanced in terms of, but the services that they, they receive are valued, you can see it. And I think you're in a pretty uh comfortable place. So that is the lightning core through the results, like I said, there is a ton more that's available for your crews. But at this point, I wanna stop because I know that there's a lot of things that you wanted to talk about and, and questions that you had.
Okay, questions?
I have a question, some of these areas, I know we're in a previous, but um we're seeing what this particular one brought for us. Do we have some of the historical data to, to have some sense of comparison to, to see if we're trending up or down?
So we, we do have the results from the previous surveys, since we took kind of a reimagined approach this year purposefully. We, you know, it's not apples to apples, right? So we can do some high-level theming, but uh but the questions are different. So um it's, it would be difficult to say explicitly, this question goes with this question, and here's exactly how it went.
Yeah, it may not be the exact
Yep, but we could do some high-level theming, absolutely.
Way of phrasing, but the, the areas are pretty much the same. So how did this do in a previous survey versus this question even rephrased, still talking about the same subject matter? Did we do better or worse than the last time, right?
Yep, exactly, could at least give us a sense, right? So yes, that's information that we can put together and, and provide.
Right, there's, and then just to clarify, ten is the high, right? So when you're looking at the chart, it's a reverse?
Which page are you on?
Well, just any one of these, these uh bar graph charts.
Yeah.
Um it says rating ten equals high, so the lower the bar, the better?
Oh, William?
Yeah, no, the, yeah, the, the, the higher the bar chart, the better this will be.
That's what I thought, but it's, the rating on the left says rating ten equals high.
The survey respondents
No, my mind was blank, because the survey itself, we, we had the question on the paper, it's on a scale of one to ten.
Oh, got it.
And when we did the conversion for the benchmarking and so on, to keep it all out of the chapel, we converted over to high.
Oh, gotcha. Okay. That makes more sense, based on the results too. Okay, maybe, okay.
No, that's, that's a valid observation.
So it looks like one of the major areas for us to work on is collaborative environment.
Yes, in the business, yes. Based on um the drivers, the, you know, what people report as their, what would be their drivers of satisfaction, that, that would be the ones to work on, yep.
I'm curious what, partnering with the city on cross-promotion, what is, I can kind of take a stab at what that means, but was there any context to that?
Yeah, this was in the business side, yeah, cause I saw that.
As far as like advertising on our website, or? I, I guess I'm not, I'm not totally understanding what the ask is when I, when I see that.
So we often see this question uh associated with things like festivals, uh with other kinds of events, so things that are visible. Uh finding opportunities for the businesses to, to really be a part of that, so it's not just labeled as a city event. But they are, are more active, they're able to drive businesses, part of the result of, of these events, those kinds of things. And when you get the cross, or when you get the uh the comments, you can dive through them as well. And the comments are useful for providing a little bit more, um a little bit more flesh to go with the statistics. But typically, it's those kind of things. Uh also, it can be sharing some of the, the marketing information, or information that's useful for marketing that the city might have. So demographic changes, census information, all of those kinds of things are also valuable for the businesses so they can, you know, adapt how they, they position the products.
And then I, I wouldn't expect to see it in here, but do we have the uh, the not-so-nice stuff that people said about Burnsville? Cause I always like reading those.
It's like going to the one-star reviews to find out what.
Yeah, just to see, you know, I don't put a lot of weight, well, I would maybe on this, but you know, on my Google reviews, I don't put a ton of weight on them. But is that information available?
We do have the, we do have the comments, we, we can absolutely provide those. Um William, you've got a, a kind of a nice disclaimer on comments, maybe you can um kind of, because not everyone gave comments, right? So there's a little bit, you, they're not, again, you can't just kind of tally them all up, but uh we can absolutely provide them, they can give you
I won't cry myself to sleep or anything, it's just, it's good to see the good and the bad.
The thing I like to point out with the comments is that uh we're all wired for storytelling. And so when you go through comments and you see the same thing show up three or four times, your brain locks onto it.
Right.
And statistics are boring, we don't really lock on those as well. Uh so when you go through the comments, I just encourage you to really, you know, force your brain to flip over so that you're thinking of the comments as a way to illuminate the statistics, but not to supersede them.
So how would you sum, well, first of all, I wanna back up and say, I like the new format, I like the new survey, a lot. This is, uh maybe it's more like what some, you know, all of us have probably been exposed to in our, more of our professional business life with surveys. And so I, I do, this is, this is great, nice improvement. I think we're able to get more out of this. Secondly, if you were to put a, I'm gonna go back on that last comment you made. If you were to tell a story in story form, you know, what came out of this, what would that story say, right? What would it, what would it be? Because you can tell a story about all the good things that are happening, and you can also, you know, talk about how you, you know, we maybe can improve in some areas, right?
So the main story, I would take you to page thirty, uh let's see, page twenty-five. So really getting to the bottom line, this is pulling together the many things I saw uh on the survey. The negative side, I, I, I positioned it a little bit more gently as far as the opportunities for additional consideration. Those are things that you'll wanna think about in terms of shoring up down the road. So these are things like collaboration with businesses, you're doing a pretty good job there, they want more. Uh communication about grant and loan information, so that's not something that, um I think a lot, very many communities are doing a great job sharing, but that's something that they want more of. Uh partnering with the city on cross-promotion, we talked about that a little bit more, a little, just a few minutes ago, as far as the kind of data that you have. And as you're building events, to kind of, you know, figure out additional ways of, of helping businesses be visible. And then the safety workshop, so they wanna make sure that their businesses are secure as possible, and then there's a lot of benefit there to having that communication, that relationship. So, so on the opportunity for improvement, that's where I would point. But I don't wanna lose track of the really important piece of the story, which is, you know, you're doing really well. Uh staff are, are really knocking it out of the park, are you at the end of the journey yet? No, but you're really making good progress. Um people love the location, that's not something that you necessarily have control over, but you know, this is a really important piece of your community and what you have to offer, and part of that you need value, value proposition that you uh have for your businesses. So that's really the story that, that jumps out at me, is you've got a lot of great things going on. Uh and there's some opportunities for doing other things to continue to provide value and drive that value proposition going forward.
Well, I, I certainly appreciate those graphs that showed national, national, you know, twenty-five to a hundred thousand population, and then, and then local or state, and then us. And almost verbatim, we were
Above.
Doing way better than
Above.
Any other measure. So those are great charts because it really could um put it in context where we stand, not against ourself, but against our peers, right?
And that doesn't happen accidentally. The fact that
Yeah, that's true.
that you've been working on this for a while, you've been looking at the data, you've been listening to your residents, you've been making improvements and plans based on that feedback, that's what drives it.
Yeah, and what drives it also is that we have plans and then we work the plan, it just doesn't sit on the shelf. So the thing that, uh on, on page twenty-five, because one of the strong um links that we have to business is the collaborative environment. And then uh you look at the opportunities for additional consideration, it's partnering with the city on cross-promotion. So what I wanna understand is what does that mean, a cross-promotion? Because every business has a different product line. And for the city, you know, um when we're promoting the city, we're letting people know that this is a good place to locate your business. And then um you know, they're also saying communicate about grants and loan information. So we've been do, we've been doing a lot more of that with having a um, a hub in our um website that lets people know what grants are available through SBA and so forth, so they can, can access that. Um and then of course, the grant program that we put in place and um, you know, had quite a few people. I mean, everyone who applied got a grant from us. So I'd like, bless you, bless you.
Everyone that was eligible, there were a lot of applications that were ineligible, everyone who was eligible received.
Pardon me? Well, sure, yeah, so everyone was, yeah, that was eligible, received a grant.
When you said everyone that applied got one, it wasn't quite true.
Yeah, well, everybody who was eligible got it.
We did our best, man.
Right.
So um, so I'd like to understand more what more the, the businesses wanted. So if we're going to look at collaboration, because they said we, we do that well, but partner with the city on cross-promotion.
So the, the cross-promotion piece is probably something that you'll need to, to have more conversations with your businesses to see specifically what kind of things they're interested in. The, the collaboration uh in the area above on page twenty-five, that is talking about the areas that are most strongly linked with
Yeah, yeah, no, I saw
with overall satisfaction, not necessarily that it's a strength. So if you go to the scatter charts on page twenty-nine, then you'll see that the collaboration is actually an area that is, is a little bit of a lower score. So those are things in general that we want to work on.
It's actually a strength, but a weakness.
And I think that dives a little deeper, William, correct, in, on page thirty-four, right? Breaking that, breaking that collaborative environment out a little bit.
It does.
Yeah, and it's on the lower side of the right-hand side, so that, yeah, so so I think those are the things that I'd like to understand more.
Yeah.
From the business side of things.
Having those conversations and, and making that a deliberate piece of the conversations will help you flesh that out.
Um William, you talked about this, the story that's being told uh kind of on the business side here on page twenty-five. Can you go back and, and kind of answer the same question about the story that's being told for you in your experience on the resident side?
I absolutely can, that's a great question.
Yeah, and that's page six?
It's on page six. So uh in short, the city is doing fantastic job from a residential experience standpoint. You know, you're, if we look at the benchmarks You know, if we look at the benchmarks, if you look at your overall performance, you're doing really well across the board. The vision that you put in place recently is resonating with residents, that's something that, they, they share the same vision. So, they're in great alignment in terms of moving, you know, everyone forward along that path. You know, staff have been doing a good job, they, they are, you know, they're professionals, they're, they're, they're doing the things that residents want to see done. And in general, people really value their, the, the life that they have in the city. So, you've got great parks, your location is fantastic, all of those kinds of things. So, I, I struggle to find a lot of negative things on the residential side because you're doing really well. There's certainly individual things you can work on, like the water quality for the drinking water, and schools and roads, so those are the three that kind of.
Yeah, well, the water quality, it's always about the taste.
Yeah.
I never.
We'd like the old Coke, please, we don't like the new Coke.
If you live here for more than five years, I bet the taste thing goes away.
Yeah, I, I, I like our, our water.
It's long-term residents, too, that.
Oh, yeah, I've never, because like when.
I like our water.
She could taste it right away, and I don't know.
That's why when I go to a restaurant, you know, I, and they say, what kind of water you want, Burnsville water, just give me the tap water.
I, I've been, I've been a bit opinionated about it, but I could taste difference. I used to like crave to drink Burnsville's well water, and when we did the, the right environmental thing to capture that water and it became surface, and it required chemicals, wow, did that change. For me, it was a, it was dramatic, and it's still kind of a.
You do know that we also put chemicals in the groundwater because we have to balance that, there's a lot of stuff coming up from the ground.
But the, but the well water was.
The surface.
It's a blend.
Before it became surface water, before we blended it, was phenomenal, like we had the best water in the metro.
Red blend?
Yes, it's like a red blend.
When we first did that well, and people come to complain about water, Charlie and I would sit up at the dais and drink our water while we were talking to us about it. We couldn't taste the difference.
It's, I will say this, it's come a long way, and, you know, we did a major investment not long ago in some additional filters, and, you know, Mr. Peterson can comment on that. You know, we still, and I think you have said this before, really the standard bearer for surface water is Minneapolis. That is the best tasting, surface-treated water, because that's all they've ever done their entire history, is deal with surface water.
Everybody just, because they got used to it, it comes out of the Mississippi.
It comes out of the river.
But they, they've got the filters and the, and the chemicals down to where it, it tastes pretty good, for, so, I think that's our goal, is trying to just keep, you know, evolving our, to, to, their, their water only, that's it.
Okay, yeah.
I mean, you know, when you look at these things, so, I mean, if, if the residents are saying they don't like it, or they're not as happy with it, that's just the information we need to take in. It doesn't matter if we like it or don't like it, because it's not about, it's about them.
If that's the biggest issue we have, that's a pretty good problem.
Exactly, and, I mean, you know, that's really what you can say is a first-world problem, like, that's pretty good.
Well, and the thing is, depending on what it is that we're going to have to do to improve the taste of the water, how much is that going to be?
Well, we just, Minneapolis, I'm going to say spend a lot more than what we would want to spend.
That's right. So, one of the things when you look at page six is that, you know, that, that residents are strongly linked with community satisfaction is government and taxes, and then parks and sustainability and the Burnsville vision. So, is that in order of most of what people are saying?
So, those aren't necessarily in order, the slide on page fourteen, if you look at things that are the furthest over to the right, if you were to look at the, the impactfulness of each of those, that would give you a sense of, of what that, what that order looked like in terms of, kind of the association. But it really comes down to the strategy that you want to put in place. You want to have a strategy building on your strengths, in which case, you know, working on your parks, you're doing a great job there, they resonate with folks, you know, take them from being great to amazing, and, and that's going to get you traction. Or do you want to work on a strategy where you're pulling up some of the things that might be a bit weaker, like collaborating with the schools and helping them to improve the relationship that they have and the services that they're providing, to the extent that you can. So.
I think we'll, we'll focus on the things that we have control over.
Absolutely.
A lot of great stuff to celebrate. There's one thing that I'll say about the staff. We, the staff always gets very high marks. Every year we've done this, it's always been very high. And I think, you know, you, you think about it in terms of where you go to get the service, a restaurant, or a retail store, or whatever it might be. And when the employees there understand who the customer is, you can tell, because they treat you like the customer. And when they start to lose that, you can tell, and you don't want to go back there, right? You know, our, I think our, our staff, and it comes from the top down, this has always maintained, our population, our taxpayers, our residents, and our business owners, that's our customer. And so, when they need something, or they ask something, we treat them like they're the customer. And, and that attitude just continues to show up in these, every, every other year, or every, every year we've done it.
And it's going to get even better and better because of the way the goals are internally with the customer experience.
Well, as I was just going to say, Councilmember Keeley, that's one of our top priorities in our organizational services, is to create a culture where it's all about the customer experience. That's what Amber's job change was about, is we, is we restructured.
The front office, that's what it's all about, if you've paid attention to all of that, it's all about the customer experience.
It's always great to hear your encouragement on that, and, and we want to be boldly leading. We believe that, just like if you'd walk into a business and you, and you want to return because of how you were treated and the experience you had, that's what we want to create at all levels of this organization, and we're going to hard-charge towards it.
Well, the other thing, and William, you spoke to this, is that people think that they're getting value for their taxes. And so, we need to make sure that we continue to deliver the service that they expect from us for the taxes they're, they're paying, because that shows up here, and it also shows up not only on the residential side, but on the business side. So, that communicates that, you know, they're getting a good value.
Yep, and, and as we learned in our recent analysis of ourselves and, and discussions, communication is about eight percent what we say, so the body language, the facial expression, the intonations, that's what everybody, I think, is saying, you know what, they, they treat me with respect, they treat me with kindness, they value me, they listen to me. All of those things come through to get that really high ranking.
Yep. Okay, are there any other comments? So, to staff, I want to thank you for doing the hard work of really looking through, because I went through each of the questions, and then in reframing the questions and doing, and hiring Cobalt to do this work, really gave us a, a view, a different view of what, how we're doing. But it, so it's very insightful, and I think as we look at all of this, it gives us direction also. So, it's going to take us some time to really study this, and it'll be great for staff to come back with, you know, here's what we heard, here's what our priority areas are, and how are we going to, what are some of the things tactical that we can do to do better? Yeah, because we already have our priorities in place, and it's already reflected here. So, I want to say to Carissa and Amber, they report to you, Greg, great job, because I've been involved with all of the different engagement events that you all have put in place. And to talk about the last one that had to do with back of the house, people don't know that you have all of these jobs that are back of the house, because the front forwarding services, people know about, public works, fire, police, parks, all of that. Those are forward-facing activities and services. But boy, when they came and they learned, they were amazed that this stuff was going on. And they said, well, you know, without these people, those folks who are at the front forwarding can't do their work well because these are the people who are supporting them and doing all of that work that helps them to do it. And people had fun, but they learned a great deal. So, Carissa and Amber and Greg, that whole team and everything, nicely done, because even, you know, the connections with police work that went out, and just getting people to, to talk to them about the new unit, the behavioral health unit, the community engagement experience, that was really well done, and people came and they engaged, and this is what's reflected, yeah. So, we know that we're on the right direction, so keep doing it.
Is there, by chance, for those areas that we, we need to work on strategizing ideas of, of, you know, maybe that, that, you know, you know, that marketing, you know.
What does some of that actually look like?
Synergy and.
Yeah, what does that mean?
That might be the biggest challenging question, because that can mean a world of different things to different businesses.
Yeah.
But there may be something in the comments, and maybe something that you've heard over the last several months, and what are businesses asking for, what's their interpretation of what that means? They may be looking to the city to be a marketing partner that maybe, maybe can be in some ways, but not necessarily in the context of what they're thinking. Like, maybe the CBB can be a better partner, right?
Well, actually, you know, there's the second realm of the Tour of Flavors that's already out. So, the restaurants and bars are getting that collaboration, but it's the other small businesses that, you know, what are we, what are we doing in cross promotion?
Work with the Chamber, and they represent a, a block of businesses, but there's a lot more out there.
Oh, a lot more than what, yeah.
Maybe they don't, without a Chamber membership, they're sort of looking for a partner with the city. How can I, you know, work with the city for marketing and expose my business and be a part of the greater city?
Because we have twenty-five, it's two thousand five hundred businesses in Burnsville, right? Maybe more now, the last.
It is somewhere in that neighborhood, I think we've, we've tried to figure out how many are actually active versus just registered.
Well, and, and the Chamber only has about two hundred and something or three hundred businesses.
Eighty-three.
And there's this, you know, if, because I think I remember when we were doing the manufacturing, you know, we talk about how many businesses we have in Burnsville, so we can pull up that number, but I, I don't know whether the, that data is correct, and we need to update it, but it's twenty-five hundred, but.
I, I think, like William said, some of this is, requires further investigation and conversation, right? This helps give us those aha moments of where we need to dig deeper. And so, you know, then in order to find out what does this actually mean for us tactically, we have to go back out and do some more research. You raise a good question, Councilmember Keeley, about our next steps. Our next steps are to, to take this data back to staff, do some staff presentations, and my guess is that will lead to smaller kind of roadshows through different departments to kind of break it down a little bit, and have some conversations about how do you take this, and design your tactics that work best for your department, you know, and maybe do some more questioning and research and determine how to best use this data moving forward.
And it's like I said, we already have our priority areas, where does it fall into? You know, so that's what you need to do, is where does this fall into, and who has that portfolio?
Just make sure when you pass the word that the ICE Center and the Gulf are high on the priority, but just not that big of a deal from a priority budget standpoint, that that's not a diss to them, they really, really value them, but they're not that big of a priority from a budget allocation.
Well, and, and the AIM Center was there too, on the, on that scatter chart on the left end of the line.
Yeah, I mean, you, you really get to separate, hey, I value this highly, but it's not as important in pub, as public safety from a budget allocation or resources, right? It's, I really value it highly, but this is really where I want to.
Well, it also tells us that the amenities really enriches the lives of people, and it's important to them.
Yeah, how many times is the word park mentioned in this?
Yeah, yeah.
Every page has a reference to parks being.
Garrett should be here. Garrett should be here.
Yeah. And it's maybe a little bit of a self-fulfilling prophecy, the, the city of Burnsville has had many, many parks and has bragged about parks per capita, so we attract more people who love to live in cities with parks, therefore, our survey says, we love the fact that we live in a city with a lot of parks, because they've been around a very, very long time, but we knew long ago that they were a highly valued asset. And, and they're just, to me, I mean, it's, it is one of the things I love about Burnsville, is you don't have to walk very far to find a park. If you have grandkids or your kids, or you just want to walk in the park, they're everywhere.
They were highly used last year, and this year, it hasn't changed, every park I go to, I even live next to a park, a park that never got used, and there's always people in that park now.
Yeah, okay, is there anything else? Because I'm also watching our time here.
I don't think so, we'll follow up on the items requested. I heard themed comparisons to past results, objective comments, Councilmember Workman, as well as kind of the actions moving forward to Carissa's point on next steps, so we'll follow up. I know Melanie has this penciled as a one-on-one topic for all of you in the very near future, so we'll follow up in that way.
Yeah, it, 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 it's always interesting, because when people say, you and I get good value for the taxes I pay, and that all has to do around service delivery, then, you know, and service delivery is about people, it's about all of you guys. We can sit here and talk about it, but at the end of the day, you're the ones who are interfacing with the, with the people and doing what they expect of us to deliver, so, thank you. Okay, and William, thank you so much.
My pleasure.
For being with us. And Carissa and Amber and Greg, thank you, nicely done.
Thank you for having us.
Okay.
Nice work on that last party.
Yeah.
Pizza in the park.
Pizza in the park, it's all about creating good connections and experiences, back to your point.
Yeah, that was, that was fantastic.
Wasn't that great?
Lots of managers to do that, right?
That was good, oh my god.
It was great, yeah, everybody loved coming and having a good time, and just, it was really good. We need more of those tablecloths, the big royal blue with U-bands.
We've, we've talked about that, as a matter of fact.
That, that whole line of tables with that, could, that would have been impressive, so if we could find the budget, Dan won't let you have them.
Well, it's going to come out of Carissa and Amber's budget, more tablecloth with the logo.
Yes, that was an impressive tablecloth, that was great.
But I'm being stingy when I was a budget.
Big and bold.
Yeah, yeah, but, yeah, that was good. Well, we have another one coming up, right, Amber?
Do we have? Next is Party on the Plaza.
Party on the Plaza, oh my god, you know, that's what I'm getting at.
International festival, so.
Yeah, and that's on the seventeen?
July twenty-second.
Twenty-second, that's right. Yeah, yeah, it's the twenty-second, so that's going to be.
Back at Nicollet Commons Park?
Yeah, we're back to Nicollet, yay, and let me tell you, that park is always busy, especially in the, and the kids love the new spray things, you know, I look out there and, and these, these hot days, and there's those kids, they're, they just love it.
Sir, we're, we're going to do the grand, grand opening on that.
On the twenty-second, yeah, yeah, and we will be there, and that'll be fun, so, that's the next party.
So, we got to give credit where credit's due, Ryan, how long ago did that project start?
Did it, uh, it started last fall.
Last fall, so last fall, you said it would be open by July fourth, and when did it open?
July second.
July second, the water went on.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, but, but wait a minute, wait a minute, it was suppo, first it was supposed to be Memorial Day.
Totally blew.
I don't have a win, mayor.
But, but he came and he says, no, we're not going to be able to meet that.
We're not going to be able to get bids.
That's right, and he communicated that, but he came and he says, okay, Memorial Day, and then came back and says, no, we're not going to be able to do that.
Well, just to record what she just said, that was a great job, you hit it, you, two days early, that's a job well done.
Yeah, that is a job.
Snow shoveling now?
If you want to, I'm here, pour water.
Yeah, and that was good, and now they, yeah, you, you got the, a lot more dancing.
We do.
Yeah, the Lion Splash Pad is not quite so overwhelmed now, because that was the only place early in the year, and we had such an early hot summer. It was, it was a crowd down there, which was actually really fun for the kids.
And we, and then, and then some of the elements failed, and so we.
We were testing over the weekend when our guy came out. We were testing over the weekend and our guy came out.
It was, it was called the Splash Pool and it was flooding over the edge into the pavilion. And I went, okay, something's wrong here. And I looked and I, there's like, there's nothing like clogging it per se that I could see. So, I'm like, I'm going to have to text Ryan on the weekend. It was a Saturday, I think.
Yeah, it was.
And then, uh, within forty-five minutes, out comes a maintenance person and he shut it down. The kids all stood around like this big, I didn't get this on video, I wish I would, huge circle of kids around this one guy, the maintenance worker. He pulls up the grill, he gets down in there, he fixes it, puts the grills back down. And then they're all watching him and he walks over and he flips a switch and the water turns on. It's like, yay. They all went nuts. It was just a moment I wish I'd have caught on video and put it on our website because it was just magical. They were just a huge crowd of kids and they, they loved it. So, it, it, the pool went away. I mean, it was really pretty fun with a giant pool in the middle, but kids were loving it. But I, I thought, eh, this is not good. We're losing a lot of water off the edge here. We're starting a road a lot, uh, along the sidewalk.
Okay. Uh, we're going to move on here. Thank you so much, everybody. Roundtable.
We kicked Councilmember Keely's, uh, roundtable back a week. So, he's got two to report on this week.
And I have a hard stop at nine-ten.
Well, wait a minute, we have roundtable. Uh, we have to talk about filling the E D C Commissioner vacancies. This is the Economic Development, uh, Commission. Because if you recall, we did not have, do we need to, um, do another round of interviews? Because we did not have anybody who was interested in being on a commission. And we have, how many openings? Two? Or just a one?
The alternate.
Oh, that's right. We, we moved the alternate up to a regular member. So, we need an alternate.
I think we could do another interview. I'm okay with that.
With a round of interviews. Okay.
Yeah. And I think if we do another call for
Yeah.
applications.
Yeah.
Now, now that our other task force isn't sucking all the air out of the room, you know, then people might be like, oh, yeah, you know, so.
And, and I don't, I don't think that'll be a long assignment for us. It'll, no.
And there might be some of the applicants that you just interviewed that would consider it and didn't consider it before.
Right, yeah.
So, from the task force. So, okay, that's, we're going to
Make that happen.
Have another round. Okay. Uh, Councilmember Keely, uh, you want to talk about overnight parking restrictions?
You remember this from a long time ago.
We, I remember this every two years.
Well, you know, what I would suggest is that we have a task force. Why, uh, let's put it on their plate.
Starts at the end of July.
Well, this is the overnight parking restrictions. The city of Burnsville does not allow any overnight rest, uh, parking on our streets at all. Many cities, one city to our south, uh, that I've brought up in my last ten attempts at this discussion, allows, um, overnight parking during the summer months only. And I believe they run maybe mid-April to mid-October, is it, or mid-November? And my suggestion is, uh, in the previous discussion, maybe we just do May first through October thirty-first or something like that. But, um, a lot of this comes from comments from residents over the years that, um, are frustrated that, you know, when they have summertime slumber parties, when kids are out of school, um, and, uh, you know, the high school kids that have a license can all come over to a friend's house. Well, driveways aren't necessarily meant to handle, you know, eight, ten cars and, and in many cases in the past, they've been ticketed. Now, we have a system in place that, that does require people to know that the system is in place. And that can be the problem is we're forcing them to know something that's unusual to notify our P D that they're going to have a car on the street and then P D knows to allow those to park overnight. Um, and I don't know where the ticketing activity has been in the last two years or so since the last time we brought this up, but I'm still in favor of changing our overnight parking ordinance to allow during the summer months, overnight parking in the streets for residential passenger vehicles only, not commercial trucks and semis. And I don't believe any city allows that overnight. I think it's basically cars, S U Vs, passenger vehicles. And so, I'm bringing it back again because it's been three years since I brought it up, I think. It's been a while. Um, and, um, I, I think it also goes, um, part and parcel with our, um, a lot of the ordinance work that we've done over the last several years where we have made the city, um, less restrictive, uh, more open and, uh, aside from the COVID, I mean, that obviously brought down a lot of ordinances and, and we're, we're going to keep some of those down, uh, potentially permanently. But, um, but this is, I just, I look at cities like Lakeville and, and I ask, do you have any problems? No, there's no problems. And so, I, then I keep asking the question, why are we a city that restricts it when the cities that have it don't report any problems? And so, I, I ask myself, what's the roadblock for us to be, you know, one of those cities to allow overnight residential, uh, street parking for, uh, in the summertime when, when obviously there's no snow and no plow? So, I'm bringing it back up, asking this council to talk about it because it's been three years and you might have forgot that I'd ever brought it up before.
Well, so the, the thing that I, I would say we have a task force that's looking at all of this. So, they will have a larger voice. Let them deal, bring it back to us. Let them take a look at it because.
They, would we need to hint to them to?
No, no, we can just ask, we can add it onto the.
They're going to look at it.
Yeah, at everything, but we're going to say to them, look at this as well.
You're the liaison.
Yeah. The, the thing is, it's good to have everybody. It's a much larger group and they'll take a look at it. Because some of them have also talked about, what's the name of that? Nextdoor?
Yeah, Nextdoor app. Yeah.
Yeah, because, you know.
Fifty-fifty on that one right now.
I get, I get information from, yeah, you know, because when we were talking about this, I said, I don't like that. And, uh, and I got, uh, a photo about semis parking and they just hate that. And then I know because I walk Portland.
Yes, that Portland.
Is bad.
It's, it's still, it's still a problem. There's still five, six semis on both sides of the street.
Yeah.
Almost every day. I just don't know if they ever move. Some of them, I, I.
I don't think they move because it's the same.
The next morning and the same ones are still parked there. Sometimes two, three are gone, but there's three or four left.
Yeah.
They just, um, I don't, I don't know what's going to take.
So, I would just say let, let, let the, uh, the, uh, task force take a look at, as well.
I'm glad you added in the, the commercial vehicles parked overnight because that's, with all the complaints we've got with trucks. Like, I could just see that happening all over the place.
This isn't, isn't meant for that.
But I have to agree with our mayor that our task force is just getting started. Let's let them do their job. I mean, we're going to, we're going to know by the time they can, people can park on the street anyway. Because this, because the, even if we do the October thing, it's, it's coming up soon enough now that.
And the other thing is that.
Well, yeah, I'm not pressing that, you know, summer's already here. I'm, I'm bringing it up because we recently got a, uh, an email and it reminded me that it's, it's still, uh, uh, something that people care about and or ask about.
Liaison, would you relay that to your working?
Yeah, and staff will put it.
Everything's going to get talked about and staff will be there and attorneys.
And staff is going to let them know. Ryan, you had your hand up.
I think our meeting's on the twenty-seventh or twenty-eighth, I think, this, this month.
A vast majority of the complaints are opposite of that where they're not wanting to allow. But granted, most of them are semi trucks, but there isn't, we don't get too many who are telling us we want them, but that's just.
I live in a neighborhood where I have an apartment building where they park on the street quite often, actually. Unfortunately, though, they have all these twin holes, houses on the other side and they all park so the twin homes when they back out, they have a hard time getting out sometimes because they're up against, kind of up against them there. So.
Another good thing to discuss though, as you're bringing up commercial vehicles. So, I mean, we know semis and commercial vehicles are parking. So, there's, there's a reason that is driving them to do so. So.
Deliveries.
Yeah. So, maybe your group, when they're having that discussion, maybe they're looking at, rather than just saying, no, you can't do it, you were talking at, um, another time and saying, well, maybe we find places and times where they can park and direct them towards that.
I agree. I, I actually brought that up to Melanie a couple of weeks ago that it'd be nice if we could, as a council, look at, is there an area where truck parking is permitted so that, because trucks do get in here the night before for deliveries. And, and I know our ordinance will allow them to deliver in some areas and others they have to wait till seven, but if the store's not open, they got to park somewhere and these truck stops are all getting filled up.
You know where they're parking now, some of them?
Down on Lady Bird Lane and.
Well, yeah. And that's why, and that's why the business, that one business owner down from Lady Bird Lane came and talked to us.
I get it. I get it.
You know, because he's frustrated.
Actually, I was hoping we'd have bought the Knox Lumber because that would have been a great yard to just say, go park down there.
Right. So, maybe when you're chatting with your
Task force.
With your task force.
Our task force.
Yes, our, our task force.
Family fundraiser is for sale.
You know, that's, that's something they could look at.
Well, the other place where they're parking now, because the orange line isn't coming in. So, the, all of that parking on Traveler's Trail on the north side, yeah, you can see all of the semis parking, parking there.
You saying it park in front of Dan's house?
No, no, no.
They're all over.
They're all over.
You go gateway and they're along gateway there.
Pepsi, Bowl Pepsi, twelve, eleven, up and downs. They're all over.
I know. They're all over and, you know, people complain about them.
I don't have a problem with a, a truck there for an hour or two waiting for something to make a delivery.
But the overnight.
They're sitting there day after day after day. It's their parking spot, right, when they're not driving on the road? And there are lots. There's one in Savage, um, that butts, it's a road that goes into Murphy Hanahan. You take a left and it's a massive yard and that's rent. Every time I go there, there's a mechanic lives over there. There's cars pulling out and semis pulling in and they park their truck there. They get in their car and they go home. There's no reason for them to use our streets to be the semi parking for their overnight, over, you know, over and over.
It's a cost of doing business. You rent your, your, your space.
They can find a space, but we need to figure out how do we, we'll at least give them an area to go.
Right.
I'm coming from New York with a load and I live in New York. I don't know to rent a space in Burnsville. I just don't know any place to park.
All right. So, that's going to be an issue that the task force will take a look at.
Great.
Okay. So, um, the next thing then is the, so Vince did, uh, so Dan, you said you have a, it's nice.
I think he was joking.
No, my, my dead, my dead, my dead time is when, when we do the reports on the committees and I have to leave.
Well, that, that's exactly what's.
I have one other item that I brought up by email that I was going to talk about tonight that just didn't, uh, make it on our, our roundtable item. This is a request, um, and, uh, recognizing Vince is the council liaison and he has been working extremely hard fundraising, uh, for the Fire Muster around his, his daily demands at work. And so, I wanted to, uh, take this one up, uh, to just help him really, um, in, in some of this. But this is the fortieth anniversary Fire Muster Community Festival in two thousand twenty-one. It was delayed from last year because we didn't, weren't able to have the fortieth. And we would like, uh, the Fire Muster Board would like to do fireworks on both Friday and Saturday because of the fortieth. And because many cities sponsor far more than what we sponsor for our community festival, they pay for significantly more amount, more amounts and they generally put on the fireworks and fund those. But we normally do that as a Fire Muster Board. I'm asking the council to fund, uh, a Friday night because normally they're on Saturday night currently, Friday night fireworks. So, for the fortieth anniversary, the Fire Muster can have two fireworks shows, one at the end of each night. The ask is, it's an eight to ten thousand dollar fireworks show. I think we got away last year at Buck Hill with an eight thousand, a slightly less than we normally do, but ten thousand is what traditionally the show costs when we do them. Uh, so the ask is for a ten thousand dollar contribution from the city, this year only. Go back to one night next year and the forty-first, um, to participate in the Fire Muster by funding Friday night's fireworks show.
It's also the twentieth anniversary of nine eleven.
And it is the twentieth anniversary of nine eleven.
Honor.
We're doing a lot of things special for that. Uh, yeah, Saturday is nine eleven. Um, our fire, our, our Heart of the City race, just as a side note, is doing a special public safety run and we're working with P D and Fire and we're going to do a little special recognition to nine eleven. Our shirt has a flag on it, on one sleeve. And so, we're, we're doing, paying homage to nine eleven with some additional coloration and red, white and blue kind of thing. But, uh, Fire Muster is also working on a lot of special things and the fireworks really was one of those that is a bit spendier than some of the other things that we're thinking of, but having fireworks both nights. You know, the other thing I want to say is the, thank goodness the state fair will happen. But Lumberjack Days was just canceled. Dan Patch Days was canceled. Yeah, it's just so many festivals are being canceled. I, 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 I get the feeling that our Fire Muster is going to have a record breaking year and, which is wonderful. And, uh, it'll be good for the community. It'll be good for all the vendors. It'll be good for everybody to get out and celebrate. Um, and so, um, hopefully you'll give it some consideration.
Yeah, our policy, the thing is, you know, I, I, I understand it's the fortieth anniversary, uh, the twentieth anniversary of nine eleven and all of that. The same is true for others. And you're saying this is a one-time?
Yes, just.
A one-time ask. Because right now, we, if you remember back in, and I think it was, uh.
I think there was a fiftieth anniversary of Burnsville. The city of Burnsville's fiftieth, we did something, right?
But we didn't do fireworks.
No, I think that was, uh, we did, it was a one-time ask to do something special in that year.
We didn't. We just had a cake.
Oh, you just had a cake?
We just had a cake. Didn't, didn't even, I don't.
I don't know. I can't remember. I thought, but I remember as a council, we did something for the fiftieth anniversary for Burnsville, the city of Burnsville in that Fire Muster, but I thought it was more than a cake.
No, there was a picture taken of all of us.
Well, that didn't help anything.
But, um, so, because one of the things is that back in, I think, twenty nineteen or twenty, when was it? Oh, twenty nineteen. The city now pays a hundred percent?
Yes. What is that background noise, by the way?
I know.
Max got it.
Yeah. So.
So, much like this, this fiftieth anniversary request, um, it is outside of our current policy. It is a one-time ask, um, this year. So, it would be outside of our normal legacy festival funding. Totally understand that. Wanted to say something about Art and All That Jazz coming back.
I'm hesitant to say it, but yeah, I mean, I'm watching all these festivals go away this year. They're trying, because they couldn't get sponsorships.
Yeah.
Uh, we're trying to rebuild and everything we're doing here, uh, at the Relief Sessions, Art and All That Jazz, stuff that we've done this year so far, they, quite frankly, the first few bombed because everything opened up. And so, we ended up falling short ourselves. So, we find ourselves about five thousand dollars short for August for Art and All That Jazz that we have to figure out how to get. And so, I'm out feverishly knocking on doors and that too. So, the World Legacy Event as well. So, it's, I mean, I'm not saying I'd trade that for that, but.
Yeah, and the International Festival is.
All the different festivals are struggling right now. And as a city, do we want to just take it on to go, all right, it's important this year to get everybody back together again. That's the question.
Yeah, that's a, actually, from, from my perspective and maybe Vince's too, that's a, that's actually a rationale to do this, to allocate this and do this as a one-time. We are, as a Fire Muster, I will tell you that, you know, we, we obviously get the city support and, and.
We do too.
Yeah, very happy that it's back to where it used to be. Pre-Great Recession, we were, we were doing, providing a hundred percent. Um, and I think the city should do that for, quote, the city's true legacy, a forty-year-old community-wide festival. And I think we're going to, we're going to.
Don't say true legacy because, you know, we have, yeah, we have other festivals.
Forty years trumps anything you got. I'm sorry.
It's not a competition.
No, but it is the, the original one and it's the biggest and it's been around for forty years.
It has.
So, I'm, that's all I'm saying.
But is there room in there for two?
Because see, the International Festival is.
Four of them are fine. I'm, and I'm not, I'm not saying, I mean, this is, this is the one that started forty years ago. None of the other ones started forty years ago. This is the one that's been around the longest. It is, it, it's got a huge carnival, you know, it's, it's, it's got huge bands, it's got tons of food and vendors. It's, it's our, it's like, you know, you have the state fair, the county fair, and then you have Burnsville's fair, which is the Burnsville Fire Muster Festival. There's a lot going on. So, for the size and scope, it's quite, I think it's much more, it's much bigger than these.
Would you be willing to support both festivals this year?
Absolutely. Yeah, I, you know, my.
No, I'm, I'm just asking. This is what I'm doing because I don't want to have to come back in two weeks and say, hey, can we talk about this?
No, I, I have no problem because, and, you know.
Wait a minute, what are we talking about? And now, are you saying that you want the city to?
Well, I think Art and All That Jazz could use some help this year too. We, we expended a lot of funds, but we have to raise some more and we're, we're out knocking on doors.
Where are we gonna get the money? Um, so Greg, then.
Same place we got the other thirty-seven thousand earlier today.
Arpa, no, yes.
It does, uh, let me tell you, because when you wrote that, it isn't required, ARPA, you can't, you can't use ARPA funds.
I'm just, it, it's, it's, it's just going into the, the big pot of funds, right? So, um, the, the, so this year is, it's not just that it's the fortieth, that's a big piece of it. But it's also the first one where everyone is getting back together. And unfortunately, I mean, you'll have the Art and All That Jazz.
Yeah, and international festival.
Unfortunately, an, an international festival, you know, wasn't, it was too early and it was too difficult to predict, so they couldn't get started. These other, like Lumberjack and Dan Patch, that was just, in my opinion, bad planning. They should have seen the writing on the wall and the trends and said, let's go for it.
Well, it was kinda sudden.
We could always pull the plug if we can't make it or if things come back or close down or the governor doesn't loosen things up. But the tea leaves were clearly pointing toward everything opening up. We started the planning for Fire Mustar several months ago, well before the loosening. But we watched and we kept looking at what the activities were and the trends in the CDC and the trends in the cases. And unless something was gonna literally flip the other direction, there was no question that we were gonna be open. So we got an early jump and started fundraising and started planning well in advance. I just think those other ones kinda waited. They were like, before they even started doing anything, they waited until everything opened up, just as Lumberjack said. They just said, by the time the governor opened things up, it was too late for us to pull together. Well, apparently they didn't, you know, they didn't do their advanced work.
Yeah, well, the international festival, uh, is doing a hybrid. So we're doing, uh, some things that are on, online. Um, but we're also partnering with the city on the twenty-second for a party on the plaza.
And, and in twenty twenty-two, the international festival will come back big.
Big, yeah.
Bigger than ever, right?
I think everybody will come back bigger than ever next year.
There'll be a two-year pent-up demand and that'll be a huge one.
Okay.
And, and if you, and if, you know, if you were to come to us with a similar request, this is big, we need a little help, whatever. I, I think these are very, very important milestones in festivals in our city.
So, no, because one of the things that we do is we write for grants. And that's how we've also have funded it, is we write for grants and we get the grants.
Are we, are we writing for grants, Vince?
You won't get it in time.
Will you write some for Fire Mustar?
Yeah.
It won't be your business.
Do they give grants for Fire Mustar festivals too?
And we, yeah, so, and we'll, and we'll, and we'll go back and write for grants. And then, uh, I already have submitted to, uh, the Lions for next, for twenty twenty-two. So already fundraising for twenty twenty-two for the international festival.
Well, make no mistake, Fire Mustar and Vince, and, and I'm helping, we are pulling out all the stops and calling far more people than have been called about Fire Mustar fundraising in probably, you know, a few years. Um, we're, we're, you know, we're, we're executing, let's put it that way. Because we wanna be able to fund better bands and we've already booked a higher-priced band because it's the fortieth. We don't wanna do the usual, right? We wanna bring some new band in, somebody that's gonna be, draw a bigger crowd. So, and it's, and is a very broad audience type of, of band, so.
Well, I think we're getting theirs, I wanna just get, because, you know, it's nine twenty-four. So are you asking for five thousand dollars on top of his ten?
Yes, I am.
Wait, this is, this is my item, you can wait your turn.
I can, I can get you back on it, I'm a, I'm a legacy too.
No, because.
We're trying to, we're trying to do the same thing you're trying to do.
This budget's gonna suck.
Yeah, it's, it's in bad shape no matter what we do, so.
So you know what, what we need, wait a minute, what we need to do here? Let, let me tell you that, uh, what we need to do is that this is a budget item because it's gonna have to come back. And I think, yeah, it'll have to come back to the council for us.
For what?
Well, we, let's, hang on, we, we have, I know, Dan is, yeah, Dan is on a tighter time schedule by three weeks than we are. I, I think we have the ability as policymakers to make a decision, up or down, whatever it is. I just, we, I think we need to make the decision and then let staff work out just like we did with the others.
Yeah, Greg, I'm gonna, I'm gonna look to you because, you know, we can't go to August because, uh, for, uh, to come back in August because if we're doing the five thousand for.
My ask for your consideration would be, I, I do think, uh, if we're gonna put these two elements together particularly, that we likely would need a budget amendment.
It'll budget amendment.
Uh, and we can find a way to fund it, we'll, we'll take the direction that you have. But I, I'd like to bring that back to you in the August council meeting, uh, from a finance and an audit perspective.
So just require a budget amendment.
Then we have it at the next council meeting?
Yeah, in the August council meeting.
That, that is, well, like, yeah, it is, it is, it is.
Oh, it is? Oh, my god.
It is.
Our calendar is like.
Yeah, it's, we're, yeah, Christmas is almost here.
I know, I know, I know.
My, my ask is give me the two weeks to, to get a budget amendment pulled together and dot our i's and cross our t's.
Because it's now fifteen thousand.
And then we can just amend the budget and it's done.
Correct.
Okay.
You can take action and we can, we'll make it happen.
It'll, it'll come, it'll come, it'll come before us, so everything is.
As long as we know it's coming, then we know we're covered.
First we got it.
So it'll, it'll.
That'll also give you individually time to talk with Melanie or I and for staff to.
Yeah, so.
What I was gonna say was, when everything opened up now, suddenly, everybody's dialing for dollars at the same time. Our, we've all had different timelines when we do things.
And then.
Suddenly, all the different sponsors are all getting hit by everybody at once.
This is the reason why I said with the CLA stuff, it's just, everybody's.
Yep, I mean, yeah, they're all, I mean, they're all getting hit at the same time and I, and I feel for our sponsors on that stuff because.
Yep.
Just for my own clarity and for, for, for budget clarity, as I work with finance staff on an amendment, I'm hearing ten thousand dollars in addition to the cap in, in the policy for Fire Mustar for the, the second fireworks piece.
Correct.
And five thousand dollars for Art and All That Jazz. With similar reasons under our, kind of in, in addition to our, our current policy for one-time expenditures.
Which means that, yeah, because the other thing is that, just looking at this policy,
We probably won't bet any though.
We're paying a hundred percent for, a hundred percent of city staff cost for Fire Mustar.
Up to cap of twenty-six thousand.
Twenty, yeah.
And Art and All That Jazz will not be closing Niglet this year, so our, our costs for a lot of everything are gonna change.
So let's just make sure that we, we understand all of that. And so you'll come back then at the next council meeting with a budget amendment.
Yes, you will see that on your agenda.
And then you will also let us know for transparency's sake, how, um, how that's going to be.
Yes, we will identify a funding source, whether that be fund balance or reprioritizing something.
Okay.
We'll, we'll identify that and come back.
I think we have a lot to celebrate, that we are gonna have an Art and All That Jazz and we are gonna have a Fire Mustar. And I, I think this is the right thing to do to make sure that we go through.
The community's gonna be able to come together this summer, which is, I think is really important.
Agreed. And next year we'll have a great.
Yeah.
International festival.
And, and.
And if you want to ask this council for additional five thousand, because you can raise a hundred grand and a couple of phone calls, I don't know why you need us.
She's already fundraising.
She can do it one, actually, but. We already know that.
She's already got her money locked up for twenty twenty-four reelection campaign.
Dialing for dollars, could I have a million dollars, please? Okay.
Yeah.
Can I give that to you, payments like this month and the next month?
Yeah, okay, so, uh, we have that, um, so staff will come back with a, a budget amendment.
We'll see it on your agenda.
And then, yeah, okay, so.
Thank you, Greg.
Um.
Thanks for bringing that up, Dan.
Okay.
Yeah, you.
So, wait a minute.
You're like that fish on the back of the whale, right?
I'm so glad I didn't leave.
So let me, um, okay. Who all has reports? Vince, do you have a report?
I was gonna be Fire Mustar, but we kinda touched on that, so.
Okay.
It's gonna be Art and All That Jazz.
And now you're gonna get five thousand dollars.
Well, it's not mine, it's gonna pay for things.
And Dan's gonna get ten.
And he's gonna, he's gonna, and he's gonna blow it up.
And it's pretty big. Yeah, we're gonna blow it up, we're.
Okay, Kara, do you have a report?
Uh, just DBB, um, there, I did give our city positions that we agreed on, our three city positions. Um, a couple other cities actually had very similar ones. Um, and then we have a couple more that needed some more time to talk to their council. And we have our meeting tomorrow, so we'll hear tomorrow. So that's, that's where we're, where we're at for DBB.
Okay.
I did send you an email earlier of one meeting from the TIS, uh, mobility, uh, development. So, and I, I had to do screenshots, cause the images were too large. Just, I, I wanna touch on one thing that's across all, uh, transportation committees. And that is, uh, TAB has been, uh, presenting, uh, race equity and, um, equity approaches. Historical events that, um, like redlining and obviously a lot of really stupid things that, that happened years ago. And that, um, but obviously they had, they had tails on the impact of those things that are affecting people's lives to, even yet today, generations later. And so, um, obviously the decisions that we're making today are, 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 uh, obviously far more equitable. And we are, uh, being very thoughtful in when we talk about, um, like, where is a bus stop gonna go? Well, how is it going to best serve everyone instead of the people just within walking distance per se? Um, and accessibility, right? How can folks on a, in a wheelchair, a scooter, a bike or walking, can they access that? Uh, and so it's, it's been a, a tremendous learning experience, very, very educational. Um, the series started with the first presenter, I think, in March, April, May, June, July, March, I believe it was, February, March. And they were so impactful that I brought that to STA, to the STA Board, the Suburban Transit Association Board. And we had a, a great discussion at a meeting, this was the meeting right after our very first presentation. And so the STA is inviting all of those same speakers to come present. And, um, at this Monday's STA, the very first speaker, um, presented and then we'll do it every month after that. So, uh, it's just, it's really been, uh, highly educational for me. Um, it, it, it allowed me to sort of, uh, open my eyes to looking at things differently, um, from a accessibility and equity standpoint. Um, when, um, whether it's TAB or the STA or MBTA, uh, is planning any kind of route expansion and stops, et cetera. So, great discussion and, and, um, you know, I think honestly, everybody, uh, certainly in elected, in an elected position, um, should, uh, go through those presentations and get the historical reference. And then actually how, uh, things are being, um, looked at today. Uh, clearly, we have gone down a journey with, uh, with Mel's, Melanie's leadership, um, with our diversity and inclusion. And so there was a lot of overlap there. And of course, in, in, in the transportation, we're thinking of, of accessibility and, right, uh, equity. Um, and so all of this has gone sort of hand in hand and has been very impactful and very helpful, uh, for me as a, as a representative of the city, sitting on all these various committees. And, um, I, I, again, I, I, I think even though we've gone through the DNI sessions with the Y and they've been great, I would like to find a way to, uh, you know, have these presentations, uh, brought to us if it's possible. And if not, the, I know the TAB meetings are all recorded, they're on the Metropolitan Council's website under the TAB, uh, area. And all of our agendas are record, or meetings are recorded, so you can watch the presentation there. But that, I just wanted to sort of pass that on, that that's been a, um, a very, very interesting, very educational, very impactful, uh, series of, um, of presentations by, and it's a different person presenting every time, uh, from a different organization or perspective and, and Metropolitan staff. Um, from that, um, the Chamber Public Policy Committee is planning a, um, uh, sort of a candidate recruitment sort of, uh, deal in October. And that is to, uh, you know, try and get more business, uh, owners and or business employees engaged in the community, engaged in the chamber. So they can, um, and, and, and hopefully they will rise and, and run for, for, for office one day and, and get involved. And maybe, uh, uh, apply for a commission, uh, for instance. So, uh, some good, good effort being, uh, had by the chamber to really, uh, get more folks involved. Educate them about how the city works and, and maybe take down some barriers that might have kept someone from taking an interest in running for office. And then, uh, let's see, finally, oh, well, uh, today's presentation, tonight's presentation, I guess, um, from Katrina, is just one small slice of this huge technology pie that I've experienced in the last couple of years, especially this year. And, uh, just some amazing stuff, but ultimately it really comes down to with all the, the Jetsons and technology and the, you know, the Star Trek, uh, Star Wars type of, of, uh, flying, you know, driverless air taxis for people. Um, the thing that's going to come to us, uh, first is going to be, um, some sort of drone delivery of, of fast food and, and small items, uh, uh, about three pounds or less. And so I do, I just wanna revert back to my comment earlier. I hope that, that this, pardon me, this council will have, uh, an open mind and be willing to go through a process that we do all the time, a governance process to take in a bunch of, of, of experts and come up with a, uh, a framework for a policy that we can adopt. So we can then maximize our membership into the World Economic Forum's Advanced Air Mobility, uh, Cities and Regions Forum. And, um, I, I think, I'm, I'm very confident that Burnsville can attract a, uh, a pilot test for, uh, a, a drone delivery service. Um, and that will have retailers, Walgreens, CVS, for instance, or, uh, all of the fast food, uh, lined up to wanna participate in that. And, and those things, by the way, are funded by the, the drone service. They work with the fast food, they come up with the model. The cost to the city is to go through the governance process, you know, staff obviously has the time to develop that. But, but once we are at that point where we invite and we're open to, uh, pilot tests, um, the companies that are, that are putting those on, uh, fund it. And, and the cities are partnering to provide feedback, provide, uh, you know, a lot of intel that's learned in this particular city, in this region. So just keep that in the back of your minds, it's not gonna happen tomorrow. But I think it's something that we have to push forward to do, um, if we wanna be a part of this early adoption and these pilot tests of these drone delivery services.
Well, I don't think it's a hard ask, Dan, because of the things that I'm involved in. Uh, as I mentioned, uh, when Katrina was here, we are a medical hub. We are a host to, um, a hospital. But the other thing is that, um, um, Amazon is not far away from here. It's in Shakopee and they're doing deliveries. Um, and the other thing is that we're gonna have, um, Amazon grocery store.
Yeah, I was gonna say, and they're, they're stealthily, you know.
I still under the, yeah.
Mysterious grocery store.
Yes, there's a, there's a new grocery store that might be, so.
Amazon Fresh?
So, yeah. I think it is a trend that is really having a lot of legs, so.
Absolutely, it's knocking on our, it's, it, well, it could knock on our door. The other one is, under the mobility committees is, is the scooters, which has knocked on our door, which, um, it came probably a little bit quicker than I thought, but I'm, I'm delighted that they're taking interest in our community to, uh, to do a test of some, uh, scooters. And so staff is obviously working on that right now. And so we'll see where that goes and, um, and we'll have to, you know, it's, it's nice that we're not the first ones that got surprised by scooters showing up in the streets as LA and, and other cities did and had to quickly respond.
And I think we can also learn from Minneapolis and what happened there in Saint Paul, so.
And the fact that have larger wheels on the scooter so that the scooter doesn't put a rut and then go over itself.
Right, and then it shacks.
Okay. Uh, do you have anything else?
No, it's, thank you.
Okay.
Can I just make one quick comment?
Yeah.
No, no, no comment back, Dan, but I've been watching around town, MBTA's putting up bus shelters all over town right now.
Yeah.
It's really cool, I didn't know that was coming.
There's some infrastructure benefits, uh, or improvements that we got through some grants, sorry, we got some, we already got some grants.
Thank you for doing that, cause those are all.
So.
Then we have a new.
There's always people standing out in the winter cold.
Yep, we just launched a new route, uh, east-west artery route. Uh, and so, uh, and, and ridership, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't touch on MBTA, ridership suburb, suburb is.
I didn't wanna comment, I just wanted to compliment you on doing it.
Now, now you just opened it all up again.
Reminded me of something I forgot, well, anyway, ridership suburb to suburb is.
You left at nine-ten, yeah.
Um, was, was never less than, uh, down, you know, was never greater than thirty-five percent down, it, we maintain sixty-five percent. That is growing back fairly quickly and our service routes are being returned. And then we will have express routes going back into downtown at, uh, pre-pandemic levels in September when many employers are anticipated to open their offices back up and require employees back into downtown. Sorry, there you go, got the.
Um, so, um, I'm, mine's gonna be short. Uh, we met with, um, Commissioner. Uh, we met with, um, Commissioner Grove today, and I just want everybody to know that there's seventy million dollars, uh, in COVID relief grant program through deed, and I sent this to Councilmember Keely. Uh, it's ten to twenty-five thousand, depending on the number of employees, uh, these grants, and therefore the, um, veteran-owned business, the BIBOC-owned business, women-owned business, businesses with six full-time workers or less, so that grant program is available, so, um, that was, I want people to know about that. The other is that this coming, um, Monday at eleven o'clock, there will be a press conference with, um, bipartisan mayors and business, and it, the, um, Minneapolis Regional Chamber of Commerce is a partner and gonna be, and this is, uh, speaking in support of the infrastructure framework that was agreed upon between the bipartisan senators that, uh, worked with the president and, um, put that forward, and so we're gonna be talking about why this is important for Minnesota. So that'll be on, and so it, it's a business mayor's, uh, press conference and all of that, and so those are the important things from the Regional Council of Mayors, and also from Minnesota mayors together, where, um, Commissioner Grove gave his report, and, and it, it, and there's a lot of things that's going on, and, but I think what is important is the money, the grant money that's...
Absolutely.
Going to be there for our businesses.
There's a lot of small businesses that are not recovering...
Well...
Quickly at all. You know, restaurants, we've been hearing great news, restaurants are swamped, and that's wonderful. Hotels are starting to crawl back, that's wonderful. There's just a lot of retail, smaller businesses that are linked to other types of industries that haven't even started to recover, and they're all impacted.
Well, I'm still working with the SBA, and like I said to you, because there are carve-outs, carve-outs for restaurants, that happened, but there isn't carve-outs for all of the other businesses that, that were impacted by, uh, the pandemic, but they didn't get it.
Photographers.
Photographers, retailers, yeah, retailers, small retailers and all of that, um, businesses like, uh, Showcraft, the trade show, trade shows, so I'm working with them, because there is some money left over from the shutter venue, uh, carve-out, so how can we look at that and redistribute it to help other businesses? So I'm still working with the, um, with the SBA administrator and her staff on that, and so...
Wonderful. By the way, I'm glad you mentioned that, the Ames Center applied for one-point-two million, uh, in the shutter venue. And, yeah, we haven't gotten word yet, but...
Any day now, we should hear it.
Any day, all right, we're crossing fingers, that's huge, that's a huge top-line revenue backfill from, from that...
Yeah, so it's good. So anyway, that, there's a lot of stuff going on, but that's the highlights, that's relevant to Burnsville. Okay, very good. Is there anything else, Greg, that, uh, from staff's point of view?
Don't have anything else.
And Michelle, and you already have, uh, your direction for the, um, EDC commissioner, so, good. We stand adjourned by acclamation, thank you, everybody.